Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 20th, 2021 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. First item of business is our consent agenda. I did not count how many items that is that we have on the consent agenda today, but everyone has reviewed that. We do have one item that will be removed from the consent agenda, and it is Item L, Slate Wood, and we will be discussing that under Other Business later in the meeting. So that was requested, to have that removed from the consent agenda. So if there are any other changes, additions, corrections to the consent agenda, please let us know, and if not, we'll need a motion on the consent agenda, all items with the exception of Item L.
I move we approve the consent agenda without Item L. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Under Old Business today, we have two items. The first item is the 840 Storage Solutions Site Plan for 71,089 square feet self-service storage facility on 8.2 acres, zoned PUD, located along Florence Road, I-840 and I-24. The Downs Group LLC is the developer. Good afternoon, Ms. Green.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Our first item of Old Business is for you to reconsider a site plan application that's made to the Planning Commission for approximately 8.2 acres located along Santana Street, I-24, Florence Road, and it's identified on the map before you with the green or blue border. This property is zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and is a part of the Florence Point PUD. At the time that the PUD was approved, which was in 2003, self-service facility was identified in the photographs as a proposed use. We mentioned last month when we discussed this that if it were bulk zoned, it would not be a use that's permitted, but because the plan development did allow that for a use back then, that it's something that we are looking at as a permitted use. This building, or this plan, is a Phase 2. Last year, you considered a Phase 1. With this Phase 2, there's an addition of just over 71,000 square feet of floor area with buildings that have, that are conditioned space, so they're served from the inside and one with, that are not heated or cooled, and so they have external roll-up doors. The architecture for the site is very similar to Phase 1, and when we discussed it last month, there weren't a lot of comments or questions about that. Quite a bit of discussion was focused on the outdoor storage spaces for RVs, trailers, cars, and boats that's proposed as a part of this plan, you know, zoomed to a plan sheet.
Did you guys plan, managed everything under the consent, just except for L?
And you can see that it looks like the parking space area to the east of the property. And during our, or the Planning Commission's discussing, discussion at September 15th, the question was raised, is the outdoor storage a permitted use based on the fact that it's zoned PUD? And so staff did meet with our legal department to review the materials, to review the zoning ordinance, and to come back to you with an answer to your question. The way the zoning ordinance is written, so when self-service storage facility is allowed, all storage must be inside, interior. It does say that the Planning Commission has the discretion to approve outdoor storage area of RVs, boats, and trailers, but that is not a use that's just permitted by right. The Planning Commission must determine that the location is appropriate and the screening is an appropriate screening. You may remember that I brought up some accessory walls and fences and berms. That's specifically because the zoning ordinance identifies those as possible mitigating elements to help screen the area. So to answer the questions that were asked in September 15th, no, you do not need to, you are not required to approve outdoor storage as a use here if you do not believe that this location is appropriate based on the screening or the location. The buildings themselves are identified as a use in the program book, so we do think that you, if they can meet our standards, would need to approve the indoor storage. So with that information, we wanted to give that to you. And then I know the next questions would be what's changed since then? So what they have done is removed some of the parking, or all of the parking that was within the TVA easement. You remember much of our discussion, in addition to buffering and site uses, was the appropriateness of putting landscaping and storage in the easement. They have moved the parking lot for the storage so that at its closest point, it's 15 feet away from the easement, and within that 15 feet, they have a fence and a landscape buffer. Now, in the easement, there is a detention-retention area, so they're managing their stormwater. And within the easement, they do have smaller plant material proposed to help soften the view of the stormwater element from the townhomes that are to the east. So the screening for the outdoor storage is outside of the easement, although it runs parallel to the easement, and so what's inside the easement is the screening for the detention pond. We, they chose materials that are on TVA's list that may or may not be approved, but we would, of course, want prior to any, anything moving forward, if this is something that you do approve, TVA to issue some information to us showing that they've approved it, even though it is in this area. To the north, along the common property line with the single-family detached homes, they've pulled the parking to the south, so it's off that, off that property line a little bit more than it was before. That property line, in addition to needing to have some sort of buffer, is also a drainage easement, and there are also some utility easements there. So we were concerned with the conflicts of buffering and easements, and then in addition to the, of course, the view of the area. They may want to provide you with some additional information about the changes, but to me, those summarize the, most of the changes. So what we want you to know about the changes is they're proposing a three-foot berm along the north side where the single-family is, but when we took a closer look at the grading plan, that berm really is at grade or just half a foot above grade of the parking lot. So even though it's a three-foot berm, it doesn't, is it not actually a three-foot berm screening the parking lot? So staff, thanks, thank you to Ms. Knoll, helped mark up the grading plan, maybe just to help you understand. And you can see the berm is the, the yellow line on the screen, and that's the three-foot berm. The houses are lower than that berm, so really that berm is at grade with the parking lot. And it's not really, it's not really, because the plant's going top of that, it's not really providing any additional height based on the grading plan. So staff is concerned with that berm as a, as a solution. And then we, of course, would want further communication with the actual TVA to approve, to see if they are comfortable with the plan. So as it's submitted, we think there's still something more work if it is a use that you want to approve. Like I said, it's at the Planning Commission's discretion whether it's appropriate here or not.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. So I think our major discussion here is, first off, do we want to consider the outdoor storage? And, you know, if we don't even want to consider that, then there's no sense in discussing the berm or all this other stuff. But if we think we may consider the outdoor storage, then what, if any, changes might we require to allow that? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other presentations or anything that we were going to need to hear today?
Staff doesn't have anything, and the applicants haven't reached out to me, but if I were going to have a guest, I'd say they'd like to say something.
Mr. Huddleston?
Yeah, they would like to.
I saw, he flagged us down over there. Are you here just to answer questions, or would you like to come up and say something now before we start our discussion?
Thank you, Chair Jones. If you don't mind, I would like to say a couple of words.
Absolutely.
Greg Gamble, our landscape architect, would like to pass something out.
Okay.
I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We were here at a previous Planning Commission meeting, I guess a month ago, to present this project. There was a lot of discussion on it. We heard that discussion. We went back to the drawing board and had made significant changes, which we feel have addressed all the concerns. You've basically got three sides to this project that butt up to either residences or a cul-de-sac or the interstate ramp. We've got the north side. We've moved it off of the property line. We've moved it, moved our, this outdoor storage out of the drainage easement. We've added a berm to the fence and landscaping. Ms. Green did mention the elevations to me as I came into this meeting, that while we do have a three-foot berm, it's basically three feet from existing ground, so we've got the parking lot raised a little bit. So she's right, the top of our berm's probably at the, or at the proposed elevation of the parking lot. It won't be any problem at all to raise that three more feet because we do have that extra room that we've created off the north property line. So that's the only design change I heard that she was really looking for. We're also just showing boats being stored along that north property line. Boats require, require less depth to store, so it's allowed us to pull that parking off of, off of that north property line. On the east side, we have pulled all of the parking and our buffer strip out of the TVA easement, so that won't be an issue anymore. We do have a retention pond over there, and we're required to screen that with bushes. So we're showing bushes that we feel like TVA would allow. They've allowed them in the past, and I see no reason why they wouldn't in the future. And it is, it will be part of our, getting our permits to reach out to TVA to make sure of that. Well, on the south side, which is along the ramp from Interstate 840 to Interstate 24, we've added perimeter landscaping, including evergreen trees to the existing landscaping that's there, and we've got a six-foot privacy fence. At this time, I'd like to introduce Greg Gamble, our landscape architect, to provide more specifics, and of course, I'll be around for any questions.
Thank you. And hi, my name is Greg Gamble, Gamble Design, and wanted to provide you with a couple of graphics that really show a little bit better than the construction documents that we've provided. We've added a little bit of color to these. On the left side of this page shows you what we presented to you last time, which was a 20-foot landscape area between the RV parking spaces and the adjacent property line. The property line on this northern boundary is actually the center line of a drainage swale, so that drainage swale is divided between both property owners here. On the left side, we're showing you our revised parking lot area. We have increased the distance to 52 feet from the parking spaces to that property boundary. As Bill mentioned, all of the spaces that are along this northern edge are going to be for boat-trailer parking only, so there will not be RV headlights pointing into our neighbors' backyards. But this entire area that you're seeing here of parking lot will be surrounded by a six-foot privacy fence on all sides. Along the TVA easement, which we've highlighted here in red, the landscape buffer is now on the outside of the TVA easement, on the outside of the red line. We've pulled that parking back, and the fence is then on the outside of that landscape area, so that's running right through here, really to provide more buffer and protection, leaving the rest of the TVA easement area in open space for detention. You do see the landscape plantings that are underneath the TVA line in that, in that location. On the next page, we're providing you a before and after of the section that shows the existing residential home and the 20-foot landscape easement that we were previously showing as compared to our new section, which includes the three-foot berm, the 52-foot of open space and landscape screening that's in there with the, the parking lot moved further off of the, that property line. On the next page then, we're showing you the cross-section across the TVA. So we have the existing townhomes on the far-right side of the page. We have their cul-de-sac area. We have a distance of approximately 200 feet from the townhome to the parking lot. This was in our previous plan. Our new plan has a distance of 265 feet from the existing townhome to the new parking lot that's being proposed, so providing a significant amount of increased offset in that location. The last section that we're showing then is the full cross-section going north-south from the existing homes that are on the right side of the page over to the off-ramp on the left side of the page, showing you the fence locations, the additional landscaping, the trees that we're preserving alongside the off-ramp in this location as well. Where we have identified from our onsite tree survey where there's not sufficient plant material, in our opinion, for buffering that off-ramp, we've added additional evergreens in those locations. That's on sheet L 2.0, referencing our additional landscape from our submittal package. The last page then shows you the material that we're going to be supplying alongside the buffer, and then the, the heights and the growth schedule for those trees as well. And Bill and I are here with Paul Bass, the architect, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question just for clarification on something that Marty Dan and Bill both asked? If we look at, it's just like that second page of what you handed us out here, just the...
The section?
Yeah, the, this section right here, the current, maybe the bottom picture, because that's what we're dealing with now, it's got the 52 feet on it, is what they're saying that the actual, you know, if we're trying to get an idea here of what people are going to be able to sort of see on their sightline, is what they're saying is that actually this outdoor storage area should be kind of elevated up here to be even with that berm as it's, as it's, so they're saying that that's actually on the same plane as that.
Sure. What they're saying is, what they're saying is that it's three feet higher on the home side, it's not three feet higher on the parking lot side, so anything that's parked there, like the boat, would be at an elevated position. And what Bill was trying to clarify is that if you made a condition to have this berm three feet higher than the parking lot, we could, we could accommodate that in that space.
So if, if what they're saying is that the three-foot berm puts us level, then it would need to be a six-foot berm? I mean, if we're, I'm just trying to get how we're gonna...
Six foot from the homeowner's side, three foot from the parking lot side. Correct?
I see. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
This may have already, pardon me, this may have already been discussed at the fellow, the previous workshop. Is there any kind of time restriction on when someone can come and get their boat or get their RV versus taking it out?
That's a good question.
I'm Paul Bass, architect. I am not aware of any time restrictions in terms of site. I think that's going to be more of a management component with the client, Drew Luna, and that has not been determined as of yet.
For what it's worth, my concern there is that you've got somebody in, you know, and I know the, the north side, they said it's going to be boats, but the south side said it could be RVs possibly. You've got some of those Class A's that have loud backing up mechanisms that may, you know, 5:00 AM in the morning when somebody's trying to sleep, that, you know, might have an issue there. So that would be a concern for me, was the, maybe some noise pollution coming from this lot?
And we can get clarification within the day from the client on that one.
And will there be, will there be lights posted shining down on the, on the parking lot when it's...
We have minimal site lighting, and everything regarding that site lighting is within the constraints of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
I like the changes that have been made. I think they're a nice improvement to the site. I think, you know, definitely the, the pushing the parking spaces back and only allowing the boats and trailers on the side that's closest to the homes, I think that's a huge improvement. I think as long as the berming is taken care of and the grade is dealt with and we're not, you know, getting a berm that's really still below grade and we're not really using our berm for the purpose it's intended, as long as we get that taken care of. The RVs on the side closest to the interstate, you know, we try to think of a place where you can house and park those large RVs. I'm thinking this could be a logical spot for that. And again, as long as we make it with the trees, the berms, you know, add as much to the site as we can to, you know, basically screen it as much as possible from the traffic going by on the interstate. We all know it says a lot about our city, just as people drive down the interstate, whether they stop or not, we still want it to look as nice as possible when they drive through. So, just comments?
Yes, I, if nobody's got, if anybody have any questions, I'll just kind of make a comment and then probably make a motion here, but just, I want to make sure and clarify a couple of things that, that this can be part of the motion potentially, I guess, is how, how to say this. I do just want to make sure that everybody's square, that, to me, well, so actually, no, I'm just going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this with the exception of we would like to have a six-foot berm on the north portion of the property, plus the fence and plus the, the evergreens, and with the, the certainty that we're going to also have a six-foot fence as well as additional evergreen-type stuff on the south boundary that would be the ramp side, that would be sufficient, that staff says is sufficient, once the, once the construction is over, that, you know, if something happens during construction and a big swath of these trees get taken out or die or whatever, that, you know, we're able to, that staff's able to say, look, this needs to be filled in, I think that's appropriate. And so I do appreciate the fact that these changes have been made. I'm going to say for the record, before I stop my motion here, that when these kinds of things come to us, and then I got some pictures from an email from, from newer information here, this picture right here, for example, you know, that's from the road, looks good. I've got picture in my package here that looks like the picture was taken right down there at the base of that ridge, which is not okay with me, just for the what it's worth column, because it doesn't give us, I mean, what we're trying to get when we see this stuff is an accurate representation, so we don't have to ask questions and go through three meetings and dealing with this and figuring out what the sightline is and how tall, you know, how tall the gate's got to be or the fence. So if we can just, if the, if the parking area is elevated three feet, let's show the parking elevated three feet on the, on the drawings. That'll help us all out, I believe, and make this process a lot faster. So with that being said, I am going to make a motion that we approve it with those exceptions, with those clarifications.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you all for working with us and for the extra on Our next item of business under Old Business, Item B, is a zoning application for approximately 0.24 acres located along North Maple Street, to be rezoned from RM12 and CCO to PRD. This is 604 North Maple Towns, PRD and CCO. Screen Properties LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commission. You may recall this particular item was brought before you back in September, where we had a couple of questions that were still outstanding. This particular project was looking at questions on the existing structures there, how they're being used, which we have received a letter from the applicant and anticipate the applicant will go over that particular information. You may recall this is in our general plan designated general residential area, just about a block north of the North Highlands area. It is currently zoned RM12. That RM12 designation under our current zoning ordinance allows one dwelling per 3750 square feet of lot, which would be two units for this case, and so the applicant is requesting the PRD zoning for the five units on the 0.24 acres of land. This particular project, as I was going through, and we've been moving at lightning speed for it, I did miss a couple of engineering comments that I would like to add into the record for this afternoon. One being that the, we need to check to ensure that there's adequate site distance for the entrance. If you recall, there are some wing walls, I'll try to get to the page here, wing walls on the property on Chestnut that we want to make sure during, if it is approved, that during the site plan, here we are, that there is adequate site distance with these walls in place. Secondly, making sure that the parking, when the site plan's done, that this last parking stall does not block the 22-foot clear that's necessary for the entrance. And then lastly, currently it's shown as an eight-foot setback in this area, and we're requesting a 10-foot PUE, which would push that building back two feet, which we believe, based on the drawings that we have thus far, we can accommodate that, but it may take off two feet off of a portion of the formal open space to the north of the site. A new program book has been provided for you all this afternoon, and after the agenda was published, we got an updated car park view on their easterly side. That's basically the interior courtyard space, which I believe the applicant will be going over with their presentation this afternoon. And I believe that's all staff has, and we did attach a copy of the last staff report and back of the current staff report for this item. With that, I would like to invite up the applicant to go over their information on updated elevations.
I'm the architect for the project. Currently handing out the revised elevation to the east side of the main building, which was the latest revision. What we have done there is we have made some changes to the smaller building to the east, and we've made revisions to this building to reflect some of the changes we made on the other one. We beefed up the balconies on that building, bided columns that match the other building. The main thing is the first and second floors now are brick and part of the third floor also, and we have the cement siding on the two, the two wings, far right, far left, third floor, on that. So the sheet up there shows what it was previously on the left, and the right is the new version.
So those are the changes...
Correct.
From the plan book that we had in our agenda.
Correct.
Okay. And no, no other changes architecturally right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any, any other specific changes to the...
Not to the architecture, no.
Okay.
Any changes to the density or the parking?
No.
So there's still five?
Correct.
Okay.
So at the, I think we've already been through a couple of meetings on this. I was present for the very first meeting, which was the sort of introductory meeting, which was meant to kind of let us go ahead and let, let the Planning Commission say, hey, we got some concerns. I heard concerns about the density and the parking, and I think it was kind of, I don't know, maybe I want to make sure everybody's kind of thinks the same way, but I felt like that was a pretty strong message that those two things were things that we're going to have to change. The zoning currently allows two units. The current zoning allows two units, and somehow, I guess we're seeing that there's five there now. I have no idea how that even happens in the first place.
Well, I'll let Clyde...
Yeah, Clyde, Clyde, you, you want to tell us how, why we're okay with not changing the parking or not changing the density? Maybe you can come up and speak to us.
Chairman Lance, I'd like to have Carmen Greenberg, who's the owner, first come up and kind of introduce herself and what she's thinking about downtown, and I'll follow up on that question, if that's okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm Carmen Greenberg, own Green Properties LLC, and a number of properties downtown and within the Tennessee area. I purchased this property more than two years ago, and at the time, it was kind of in shambles, and there were four units on the property. One is on the Chestnut side, which is a single unit, like a small house, and that was rented to two individuals. And then in the main house facing Maple, there were two units downstairs, quite large, and at the time, there were two tenants in the front unit and two in the back. And the upstairs was in the process of being refinished by the owner. At the time, the upstairs is as big as the downstairs, and it has two entrances separately. At the time when I purchased the property, I envisioned market improvement at that corner, and my vision was to, I had a choice to continue to rent it at the level that the property was at the time, or to improve the property in that corner of our downtown. So I embarked on this project, and we are here now. And it's been a long process, and I appreciate my team has done a great job, and we have complied with the requirements up to this point as far as the architecture and the vision for that area. And I'm willing, obviously happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you, do you know, I was going to try to look it up, but do you know was the number of individual units that were on the property originally, if those were approved, or was that just the way the property had evolved over time? Was it a single-family unit that-
It is my understanding that it was a single-family unit that at one point evolved. I'm not sure how the second unit was built on the property, the small house. The main house is quite large, is more than 4,000 square feet under roof, and the upstairs currently has four bedrooms slated to be finished, so it's quite large upstairs. It's 1,800 square feet, or about 15, which is large enough to have a family of five live there. So, I'm not sure how it evolved to this point of being subdivided into four, potentially five, but with no other improvement that I would do now on it, just putting a Band-Aid, I have four units available, with three being rented right now.
Okay, so we just don't know if they're permitted uses?
I have another question. We've heard several times that you were really excited to do this project and get it off the ground and stuff, and I've noticed that there's a for sale sign in the yard, and that it's on MLS with some conceptuals, now different conceptuals than these, but not, if this gets approved, are you the one doing the project, or are you selling the stand?
If it gets approved, I would like to do it. I want nothing more than to improve our town and to be part of the downtown. As I mentioned, we currently own three properties downtown and other properties in Tennessee and Florida and other places, but as I have other projects going on, this has been going on for about more than two years, and as much as I want to long-term improve this property, there is a financial feasibility to what I'm looking at. So, yes, I would love to develop this property and, and improve, markedly improve that corner of our downtown.
I believe this may have been answered, pardon me, in a previous, previous meeting, but do you know what the total square footage is currently and what it's proposed?
Right now, the square footage that I am aware of, it's close to 4,600 square feet. What is the, Michael, the total?
Don't bring my wrong, I am, we're looking at figures in the book.
What's the current? The current is 4,600, or the, like, no, sorry?
Proposed is what?
What's the proposed? Is that what you're looking for, or the back house? Okay.
Sorry, I don't know that number off my, off my head.
And 4,600 is the total of all living structure, or all living units on that-
It is my understanding that it is, but it's not 100% confirmed, basically.
10,455 is to consider PRD, five single tenants, on 10,455 square, no, 10,455, sorry, square feet of land, sorry, 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 that's, I got ahead of myself.
And I'm also excited about the opportunity or the possibility of these units being owned, which there's nothing wrong with rental, but people buying downtown would, I would envision that they would be invested in improving the properties, keeping the properties at a certain level. And part of the reason, my husband and I plan to move downtown, and what we see from talking to people and neighbors is that people, empty nesters like we're about to be, would like that lifestyle, younger families, as we have young professionals moving to our town and the downtown area. So that was the vision as far as the townhouse and the relatively smaller units, but with all the amenities that our town gives, offers us these days, walking to the market, being part of the downtown, the restaurants and nightlife, so I'm excited about it.
So I would say, I mean, I'm definitely excited about the downtown being revitalized. My challenge right now is, is as I talk to people who have, who live in these developments, the biggest challenge they have is parking. It's not necessarily for them parking, it's for their guests. When you build a property like this, people want to come and visit downtown with them, and they have nowhere to park. And that's the challenge we have with doing a project. In the past, we, I've looked at it and said, "Man, I really would like our downtown to be like that." But I have to look at projects that are existing now and say, "If we can't park it right, that's a big difficulty for me to prove going forward."
I agree, and our, our residents that we're trying to build will, will have the same problem. It's on Manny, and when we have company, we'll have to find a place for them to go and park. I do think we have addressed the parking for this property, but I do agree that if someone has a big party, they may need to find different ways of addressing parking. There's a parking garage nearby, right?
And the challenge is, for me, and it has to be a reality, is, is we as a city have to address that problem as we allow people to build, because we can't ignore the fact that people are going to come and visit. And yes, you have parked it clearly within the guidelines on this property, but when we look at the city as a whole, we aren't addressing the city as a whole, because there's no parking.
Yeah, currently, I would respectfully propose to you that that property, if, if I continue to rent it the way it is, and finish the upstairs, and now we have, you know, 1,500 square feet upstairs, and with the other units being rented, we have a parking problem right now. I think that this is actually improving the current parking situation that I have at the property right now.
How many, how many bedrooms per, per unit are we talking here? Do we get the square footage yet? How many total bedrooms between all five units?
So, twelve, yeah, three times-
It's like two two-bedroom and three three-bedrooms.
In the current?
The two, two-two-bedroom units with two spaces per unit, it says four spaces required, four spaces provided. And the three-bedroom units, at three spaces per unit, is six spaces required, so 12 spaces provided. So I take it you're talking about you'd have two cars in the garage and two to park behind that-
Right.
-for each of those units.
Is that right?
Which is, two in, two out.
Yeah.
So every one of those, to get the parking requirement, will have that, so all of that, the parking lot part that we're looking at would have two spaces behind each garage where cars could park. And the, so that's the- Is that, does that seem like what y'all are seeing?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
And, and we determined there's 13 bedrooms, and the current number of bedrooms that are within the two structures now is, I mean, I'm thinking, I thought we talked about that being like one, so there were like five total bedrooms out of the, the units that are there right now, you know, so part-
Mr. Lance, just to go back to, to your question from a moment ago about the square footage of the, of the proposed structure's total, on page one, the page after the, after the cover sheet, says that the three-bedroom units will be 1,800 square feet minimum, and the two-bedroom units will be 1,400 square feet minimum. So that's a total square footage of 8,200 square feet of living area. I think that those numbers would probably be exclusive of the garages, is that, is that correct?
So we're, so we're talking, going from 4,600 to 8,200 minimum, which I'm not going from five bedrooms to 13 bedrooms. It just doesn't seem like that's, that's not a same same, and I guess, you know, one of the things, it's, this is another one of those things, kind of what I was talking about on the last, when, you know, when we first brought this, Clyde brought this to us in the day meeting, where, you know, kind of our workshop meeting, and, you know, it's presented to us as currently five units, we're going to five units, and we still kind of push back on that, kind of saying, "Well, maybe it's not the same, and we really need to see some changes." I can't imagine why five bedrooms is going to have the same parking issue that 13 bedrooms has. That's, I'm struggling a little bit on this.
I'll say this, I've been, I've said this since the, in both meetings, I compare this to Maple Key right down the road, and it's got twice the amount of land, and it's going to have one less unit than this one has. I mean, I'd be down with three units in the front, but I can't get behind the two units in the back. And just because of the, I mean, drive down Maple Street and just look at the pure size of Maple Key with four units on twice the amount of land, and then drive three more blocks to where this is going to be, and imagine five units on half the land. I, I can't get behind it like this.
Yeah, and these are all concerns we talked about at the last workshop. No things changed.
Thank you.
Clyde Roundy-Hedelson Steel Engineering, representing Carmen Greenberg. As far as where we've been on this process, I think where, where we're at, and where I'm at, is I walked both properties. I walked Maple Key today, took pictures of Maple Key, I walked 501 Olive Street, kind of walked it, kind of analyzed it. And the reason we're still here is, is there's, the challenge we're running into, and again, it's not a challenge, it may be supported, and we may have to go back to the table. Carmen, amongst other developers we've been working with downtown, are really what I call early adopters. They're, they're taking a risk on their side to come downtown and try to do something significant for downtown. There are, there's a mechanism called a CCO that has been provided for her and some of the other folks we work with to, to go downtown, to be incentivized to go downtown. And, and she, we've been working on this one for two years, and I've had seven of them since that time. There's seven of them I'm in process with. All of them have issues. There's something, there's an issue usually with density, there's potentially an issue with parking, but at the end of the day, the catalyst for the CCO is a downtown redevelopment, which means that you're asking for a different type of lifestyle than, than you would expect in a more of a suburban situation. This, this is one block off of downtown, and we are providing more than adequate parking by the regs. We actually have two guest parking spaces as well. And it sounds like a weird fit, because it's a lot of, there's a lot of square footage on that piece of property. But when I look at Maple Key, and I, and I, I walk through Maple Key, and I encourage people to walk through it. You may not like the architecture, you may not like the way it feels, but the fact is, is the quality's there. Those are very nice constructed homes. And there's surface parking, which is a different kind of feel. It's a different feeling, which makes it different. Because of that mass on the corner with surface parking, there's a lot of weight behind it, so it feels very much like it's, it's just there, because it's a big mass with nothing beyond it. So I appreciate the scale, y'all having challenges with the scale. And so I said, "Okay, so we're not Maple Key," because we don't, we have, we have garage parking, we have a different scale that we're working with. And then I went over to 501 Olive Street, and the challenge there is that there's, there's no change in scale. You've got a large mass of building, you've got parking, you've got a large mass of building, and you have parking, so as a result, it fills up that lot, and quite, it fills it up in a really significant way. So I said, "But we're not that either," because we have, our larger buildings are on the front, facing North Maple. We have all of our parking internal, like a courtyard type of parking scenario, then we have two units on the back. They're two-bedroom units, they're smaller, so we step down from the main mass to the secondary mass to the adjacent relationship. And because we've been so, I, I, we've analyzed this architecture so much, that whereas on one, on 501 North Maple, or Olive Street, the most aesthetic part of the building's the front. When you look at the side, it's very understated. If you look at the backs, very understated. I think this could be really attractive, because I think the rear, the, the front of the rear building's going to look like a front. It's going to have porches and balconies, it's going to have a lot of detail. So when you look from the corner on North Maple and Chestnut, you're going to see a very interesting perspective of larger massing buildings, smaller massing buildings. And Mr. Lance, we've gone, we've gone through the process of looking at three, we've gone through the process of looking at four, we've gone through the process of looking at five. If we have to move off of five, we'll move off of five. But I want to challenge that, because I think the assumption is it's going to be Maple Key, or it's going to be 501 Olive Street, and, and I stand here not to be contrary, but to tell you, I think it's a different animal. I, I think, I think it could work in a way that all the fears that we have in relation to those two buildings, I think we can solve those. I think we have, I'm standing here because I think we have solved them. Mrs. Jones was very sensitive to that rear elevation that's facing out in the neighborhood as you come down Chestnut. We've even detailed that differently, so it doesn't look like a, really a back of a building. And so, what I'm challenging us to think about is if we're working in the CCO, we're working with the parameters, it's not going to be a scenario that we're used to. It's new, these folks are trying something new. And scale-wise, we have two elements on both ends, one on North Maple, you know, on, you know, one end of the street, and we have one on the other end, that are kind of different, but I don't think we're necessarily happy with how those things resulted. I'm very sensitive to that. But the reason we're coming back with what we've come to in the first place is I think it's more on principle that this is what the CCO is generating. It's allowing this potential to happen, and as a result, we are taking advantage of that, but at the same time, there's a reason, and as I ask the development community, because I work with people that are working with this environment, they're, they're taking a huge risk. Now, we may think, think they're taking a wonderful opportunity, but a lot of them are taking a huge risk. Behind this house is rental. On the left side of this house is rental. On the right side, I'm not positive it's rental. Across the street's commercial. So the context of where this house is located, this potential development's located, this is going to be the nicest house five times fold. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be very, very nice, and it's going to be very expensive. And so as the development community, all these houses, Maple Key, 501 Olive Street, they're coming in nice. I mean, they're, they're not substandard structures, they're not like the, like the developers were trying to get away with something. This is very much high-quality products, and they're dropping them into areas where the adjacent relationships don't make any sense from a financial standpoint. So, so the reason the density stays high on these projects, not only this one, but on other ones, is that the developers are trying to protect themselves from the risk of going downtown. They know if we go in with three and we had two, that could work, but they're more exposed. If they go in with a little bit more density than we're comfortable with, it just gives them the ability to protect their investment. So that's why we held it. If you say, "You're not going to support it, we have to go down in density," we understand that. But I wanted you to understand why we're coming back with the same amount of density. If you're meeting the Parker requirements, is there, if there's really not a density requirement within the CCO, if we respectfully looked at Maple Key and respectfully looked at 501 Olive Street and said, "We can do better than that, and we feel like we've done better than that," that's why we've come back with what we have. We feel like it's an architectural decision and a massing decision, just the way it'll feel, and you all, I got that loud and clear, you're not happy with the way it feels. You're, you're concerned it's going to feel too much on the site. But I think if we, again, if we met the requirements for the most part, I feel like there's lakes to stand on to try. Again, we will, we will pull it off the agenda, we will defer if we need to, to go back to the drawing board, but I wanted you to realize why we stand here now, because we feel like there's, there's a legitimate reason to stand here based on what the CCO allows.
All right, so I'll clarify a couple of comments, just first of all about the Maple Key. I mean, I think frankly, I think we're all saying we're okay. If, if you, if you want to put two units that look like Maple Key, which is, would be similar to what they've got on Maple Key, they got four units on half an acre, if you want to do two units that look just like Maple Key and same construction, architecture, all that, suit me great. I think it'd be awesome. You know, I mean, so I, I don't have any problem with Maple Key. I hope that didn't come off that way.
Yeah, same here.
But, you know, secondly, you say the CCO is in place- But, you know, secondly, you say the CCO is in place to kind of incentivize this. The CCO has rules, right?
Uh huh.
If what you're trying to do fit the zoning and the CCO, it wouldn't be a planned development. And so the reality is, yes, we do have incentives in place through the CCO to redevelop, and there are boundaries around that, which we set, to give you guys a vision on, here's what we expect. When you bring stuff in here, this is what we expect it to look like. This is what, we all get beat up on this all the time, that we don't give you guys enough, you know, guidance or whatever. The CCO is in place to give you guidance, and you come in here talking about the CCO, and it doesn't fit in the CCO. So I get what you're saying. We do want, we want to incentivize, we want the redevelopment, we want all that, but the opposite side of an early risk taker is an early precedent that we set. When we approve a 20-foot-wide building with parking underneath and parking behind, just to get the parking, when we know there is no chance, people are going out and moving their cars out of the way, back out onto Chestnut, which is 14 feet wide or whatever, so that the person that's in the garage can back out and get out, it ain't happening in real life. So the planning department, the planning commission is trying to say, we're trying to avoid building clusters, you know, mess-ups. And so we've had, I think, two meetings on this already, this being the third. We've had, you know, those two meetings are literally set to try to iron this stuff out and go through your story and your, you know, why you think it's okay. I mean, I'm struggling, I don't...
I'd be good with the three in the front, not just going to two. I'd be okay with the three in the front.
I could probably get okay with three.
Yeah. And that's, that's still more than the two that's allotted currently, but if not all the way at the five. I, I'm like Rick, I think Maple Key's a great development, it looks good, but if you compared the densities, they got four on twice the land, so two, half of it would be the same density. So I'm even okay with three. So I'm even giving it a little bit of a stretch to be more dense than Maple Key. I like the architecture, I think it looks good. I like the feel of it. It's just too much on that piece of property.
I do want to say, I think, I don't think there's any question from this planning commission that we are very excited about the developers that come to downtown and that want to develop. We realize that every developer that comes before us is taking a risk, and an extreme risk. It is not anything taken lightly at all. We appreciate it, we appreciate the investment in our city. We want it to be a better place, and we're just here to try to help it be the best it can be. So I think we've tried very hard to tell you the things that we think could make it be a great development for downtown, and that's what it sounds like that this commission is hoping we might see on this project. But it doesn't look like that fits in what we're seeing right here. And I will add, I do love the changes to the architecture. I think they were fabulous. I think it is a great-looking project. But I just think we've got a ways to go on the density, the parking, all the things you've heard up here today.
Well, thank you.
Comments and questions?
At this point, we'd like to defer and go back to the drawing table and look at, talking to Greenberg about going with three units. Fortunately, I mean, I'm telling you, the issue we've run into is really the economies of making the decision to make it work for her. So if that's okay for us to go back to the table, we'll go back to the table. Sorry, we can't get to a solution today, but that would be our request.
First to defer, do we have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay, that's our old business, so we are moving into the GDO portion of our agenda. The first item today is North Church LLC, Section 2, Lot 10. Final plat for one lot on 3.3 acres, zoned MU and GDO 1, along Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive. CM Gatton is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. And next, the first item under our gateway design overlay portion of the agenda is for you to consider the approval of a final plat. And I'm going to spend some time scrolling here. This final plat is, the heading was initially, which create two lots of record, but it's actually just to create one lot of record for property located north of Medical Center Parkway and east of Robert Rose Drive. The property, the plat is in very good order. Matter of fact, it's one of the rare instances that planning department didn't have any comments, planning, engineering, or landscaping. We would ask that you consider the matter and approve it, subject to all staff comments.
All right, any questions? This is for a final plat on one, for one lot on 3.3 acres.
Move for approval. Second.
Is that subject to all staff comments?
Of course it is. Aye.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Our next item is Clary Park. Master plan and preliminary plat for 20 lots on 77.2 acres, zoned PUD, CH, GDO 1 and GDO 2, located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Willow Oak Trail, and Robert Corlou Road, formerly Clary Lane. Hans Clark Parkland Holdings LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. Our second item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider a master plan and preliminary plat for the creation of 20 lots located along Medical Center Parkway, Wilkinson Pike, Russian Park Drive, and Robert Rose Drive. This plat is consistent with the zoning plan that was approved this year, and it is the technical documents that basically orchestrate the development of the property. The preliminary plat is in relatively good order. It does include all the conditions of approval that were a part of the zoning. They're listed on the master plan sheet that I have pulled up. I'm sure it's difficult to read. And so this plat shows the grading, master grading, master drainage, street improvements, roadway extensions, timings of the extensions, sidewalk extensions, the installation of gateway streetscape elements, which are required with the development of this property. Those would include a serpentine sidewalk along Medical Center Parkway, street trees, repurified irrigation to the back of the curb, pedestrian scale lighting, and then along the other roads, it would, the only difference would be the sidewalks not serpentine, but it is a straight sidewalk maintaining a grass strip sufficient for the street trees. The plan also shows the multimodal path, that's a part of the zoning, that will be constructed along a road which was formerly known as Clary Lane. And throughout the review of this process, I consistently still call it Clary Lane, even though it's not correct. So if at any point I do, I apologize. But they, the name is now Robbie Corlou. I believe it's in honor of a neighbor who lost a loved one named Robbie Corlou. And so what we, for a few years now, have been referring to as Clary Park Lane, is actually now Robbie Corlou. And we did provide some conditions that we would like any approvals to be made, to subject to all staff comments. But this master plan, preliminary plat's a little different than the typical ones you get with our regular plots and plans part of our agenda, because it also includes those developer commitments within the rights of way and own properties. And so Mr. Matt Taylor is available for questions about the master plan and preliminary plat, but I'd like to invite landscape architect, I'm sorry, I don't know her last name, her name's Arianna, to come up and go through the details of those streetscape proposals. I think the way that I would frame that is the streetscape improvements are within the boundaries of the gateway streetscape master plan, but somewhat different. For those of you who've been on this ride as long as I have, you'll know that we had some monument signs throughout the gateway. And a few years into our GDO creation, we abandoned those monument signs, because they were costly, and management years ago abandoned that concept. But we do have some at the avenues, it's the multicolor sign, says the avenues. There, there's a couple corners where we do have those large monument signs. Of course, one is proposed here. The design of it's somewhat different than what we have in other locations, but the existing signs are different as well. So it's, it's not like there's this one sign that's going to be different. And the others are all exactly the same. But I do want you to look at it, and then provide Arianna with feedback regarding that. It includes, of course, lighting that's required. This Clary Park also has some areas of additional landscaping needed and street trees needed. It has on-street parking, has some streetscape elements like benches and seat walls and lighting that were really important and need to be here. As you know, the gateway streetscape master plan requires stamped and colored crosswalks that are made of asphalt to go within the road, and pedestrian plazas made of concrete at the intersections. Recently, our engineering department resurfaced Medical Center Parkway and just took out every single stamped and colored crosswalk we had. And so I still don't know what the plan is moving forward. Our adopted plan, gateway streetscape master plan, does require the developers to install those colored stamped asphalt crosswalks. But now that our engineering department took them out, I don't know what we're going to do for a plan moving forward. Obviously, we don't want to, if, if nobody else has it, and we're not going to go back and put them in where we took them out, then it may be the case that we say they don't need to do the crosswalks, because we've taken out everybody else's. Or it may be that they'll come up with a plan to put them back where they took them out, but I think that they're not coming back due to the cost. However, the plazas will be in place. The plazas will be real brick, not stamped. I think they're going to be real brick, not stamped concrete. And so this is a plan that shows you that. One of the conditions of approval at the zoning phase was where there's a big pedestrian draw across Willow Oak, that there be a traffic calming measure. Our, the city has adopted design guidelines. The design guidelines give various options for traffic calming measures within public rights of way. Mr. Taylor did meet with our city engineer to discuss the options. At this location, where Robbie Corlou will cross, there's going to be a pedestrian plaza that's raised and has real pavers in it. And we think not only is it a good opportunity to have that physical connection, that's not only a physical reminder, but also helps slow traffic in the area. It's also an opportunity to see how well these work in public rights of way. So we're excited about that as a traffic calming measure here. All in all, the plans are consistent with the zoning, so staff would recommend that you approve it, subject to all staff comments. I would like to invite the design team to the lectern to present the additional information to you, if you have no questions from me.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Green before we hear from the design team?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Taylor from SCC, this is Arianna.
Arianna Piscara from Reagan Smith.
So we've worked together, put together the master plan and preliminary plat and all the streetscape elements that you've got before you. I think in general, you'll see that those are very much in conformance with the PUD that you approved a couple of months ago. And I think there are a couple of items that Margaret Ann wanted us to spend a little more time on. One of those is the raised crosswalk that she just mentioned. And so that will be, I think we actually call it out to be stamped concrete, and across the whole intersection, that'll be raised, very much like you see at, in the central part of the avenue, where Victoria's Secret, it's that kind of area right there, like Kay Jewelers is on the other side. So it's all colored and stamped, so it kind of acts as a natural speed mitigation feature there. And then the signs themselves, as Ms. Green was talking about, are a little different, but we think that they are in standing and keeping with the theme and the spirit of the streetscape master plan. We think that they go along well with what's across the street at the avenue. Probably the best view for, to see what we're proposing there is on L 3.3 of the streetscape plan. I think the package was quite lengthy, so you may have to scroll a while there. So it's this view here on the monitor, and as far as materials go, Arianna is much better to describe that than myself, but that's going to be your best view right there.
So I can describe a little bit about the design intent of these monument signs. So these are going to be on either side of the streets on Honey Locust and Willow Oak. So they'll be kind of our entryway monuments, sort of the threshold that brings you into the Clary Park development. And so they are within the guidelines of the gateway with just a few modifications. And we wanted to keep with sort of a contemporary form, while also using some traditional materials that mimic what you see at the avenue, so that everything sort of goes together. So you'll see that the seat wall material is just made out of a ledgestone veneer that's in line with what you see over at the avenue. We're using Corten steel lettering, similar to what's over at the avenue with a more contemporary style font. And then on the top of the column, you'll see a planter, a stone planter, and we're using that planter throughout the linear park, as well as incorporating some of these seat walls at the linear park as well, to create sort of a consistent visual indicator that this is all sort of part of the same development. Our planting styles are, again, kind of keeping with the contemporary style, so we're using a lot of grasses for texture, crepe myrtles for color, and some more manicured hedges to create sort of a secondary wall that frames the back of the sign to make the lettering a little bit more visible. So here's a visual plant palette. And also throughout our linear park that runs along Robie Corlou Drive, we have three sort of pedestrian plazas. So there's a multimodal 10-foot path that runs along Robie Corlou, and at strategic points along the path, we have these plazas that provide two benches, and we have a similar seat wall to the monument signage that you've seen, with that signature sort of planting urn at the column. And I have some illustrative drawings. So this is kind of a, an elevation view of what the plaza might look like. So you can see the column and the seat wall kind of draws you into the plaza. We have benches facing each other to encourage social interaction. They all feature lighting and trash receptacles and bike parking. And to give you a sense of scale, here are some perspective renderings of kind of the feel of these little plazas. And that's all for the landscape design.
Okay. Questions or comments regarding what you've seen on the landscaped sign?
It's beautiful. I want to just make my yard look like that.
I know, it's great. I do like it. I like the, what you call the signage wall or seat wall or whatever, with the Clary Park, you know, kind of framed by the hedges behind it, and crepe myrtles. I think it looks really nice. Anything else you think we need to know about or look at?
Oh, ma'am.
You just pointed out all the good stuff, right?
They did a good job with the illustrations, I think, the landscape palette. The only other thing I would want to put you on notice is we are still anticipating that Wilkinson be paved this, this season. So we have plans in our office, we've provided feedback and comments. They have plans for widening those portions of Willow Oak that we talked about with the zoning, and, am I wrong?
Yeah, I think that's got it.
Uh oh. Sounds like it's gotten pushed off. We're still coordinating, though. My point is, Mr. Taylor is following up as committed, and are, and we're providing that feedback. But they are going to happen together when they happen.
All right, can you go down two pages?
Can I do what?
Down two pages. Down two pages.
Yeah.
Where it has the crosswalk.
I wonder. There.
Yeah. So this is what you said, that the city paved over.
These things that, if you've been in Murphysboro a while, you've seen on Med Center. We require developers to, on corners, to put one leg in, one leg, one leg, one leg. And since the gateway's a little over 10 years old, it was time to repave. When the city came in and paved it, they just paved, they took it out, ground it and took it out, and now it just looks like this.
Right. So this is stamped pavement or stamped concrete?
This is asphalt. Stamped and colored asphalt. This is stamped and colored concrete. That's a terrible C.
Yeah.
A circle.
It's a circle. Because the sidewalk is concrete, so we have them do concrete. If, and this is, this is just for, in the future, if you see me coming back and recommend Gateway Streetscape improvements, I will strongly advocate for real pavers and a concrete base so that when the city comes back to repave, see, we don't have anybody on staff who has the talent and equipment to install those crosswalks. And it's cheaper to just go straight through with asphalt. And since we manage taxpayer money, we often look for the most cost-effective way to do it, but we require developers to put it in. And so it is important. It is an important part of the Streetscape. So I think if I came back to you in the future and recommended Streetscape improvements, we have, there are cities all through Tennessee that have actual real pavers with a concrete base. I'm going to ask you to consider that in lieu of stamped and colored asphalt, since my 17 years here have shown me that sometimes best laid plans are mice and men.
So will this be resolved before this project goes in?
So right now, we're saying they have to put it in. That's consistent with the plan that we have. I think, and so they're ready to put it in. They're like, okay, well, you know, we've known this all along, your plan says this, these are the specs, these are the colors, these are what you have to do. We have, recently, I've put, I've said, well, why don't you just give me a surety that you're going to put it in? Because we don't want to hold up their certificate of occupancies based on the city trying to figure this out. So if we don't have it figured out, we'll take money from them. But my suspicion at this point is that our city engineer is not going to go back and put them in. And so we have mechanisms that we need, though, in place, and they're willing to put them in.
Any other questions, comments? Looking at the master plan and preliminary plat.
If there are another, no other concerns or comments, I move for approval with all staff comments.
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item C is North Church LLC property, Lot 7, Rooms to Go addition. This is initial design review of a 9,567 square foot addition to an existing furniture store on 3.4 acres, zoned MU, CH, and GDO1, located at 2846 Medical Center Parkway. Seaman Development Corp. is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. This next item is, includes a part of the, one of the lots that you just considered for a master plan. There's an existing Rooms to Go along Medical Center Parkway, adjacent to the McDonald's. I think some of you may recall, we had lengthy discussions about our desire for them to maintain the masonry base as we like, and they pushed back against that, built it and realized it was a great idea and it looks really good. So the Rooms to Go is existing. They have a contract to acquire some additional property from the adjacent Clary Park development, and they would like to do an expansion to their building, which adds an additional component that allows like outdoor furniture sales. So on the sheet that's on the screen, the additional property that's being purchased is here. The building expansion is actually here. So this is the building where they're going to have a new entrance with patio equipment for sale. In the property that's being added, they're having some additional parking. And so the building, as submitted to us, is consistent with the existing building. You can see this is the new area. It looks like the existing building, and it's the same materials called out, same specs. The difference is the cover over the entrance. It more closely mimics the children's line on the opposite end of the building, but it is somewhat different. They're proposing some steel tubing as the patio background there. Let's see if I have a better image for you. I may not. We would recommend that, this is initial design review, that on initial design review, you do approve this, subject to all staff comments, because it is, it is consistent with what's out there. Let's see if I can zoom in so you can see a little bit better. As you all know, it was a very large agenda today. There you are. So this is the difference. It has the aluminum tubes that are painted black with RTG, Rooms to Go Patio. Hold for it. And so I think that would be the one element that you may want to have discussion with. Otherwise, they are able to meet our standards and they're, they have the two cross accesses that we have asked for in the past. And so if you have any questions, Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add? Yeah. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
So basically, we just need to make sure we leave it open for further discussion on the actual signage above this.
So what's behind it, I don't think is part of the signage. It's architectural, but the, but the rest of, that's the area that you may have an opinion on. The rest of it is consistent.
And I think that, Matt Taylor from SCC, I think the tubing pulls some from some of the features that you see at the kids entrance out there today, and also there, you know, kind of a steel structural element to the central feature as well. If I knew how to zoom on this thing, I would, right here, you can see, though, those are very structural, steel-looking members. I think they really just pull that feel from there over to this entrance in a different manner.
Ms. Green, I assume this doesn't encroach on any setbacks or anything, the addition, right?
They comply with all building setbacks and parking lot separation requirements.
Okay.
Owner's representative would like an opportunity to speak if you would allow it.
Okay.
My name is Nick Roth. I work for Rooms to Go. I'm their VP of Real Estate in Atlanta. This store, the patio store that's being added here, this will be the, Murphysboro is a variation of our prototypical stores. We bought a patio concept out of Florida. This will be the first triple branded store in the state of Tennessee. We've built a lot of them in Florida and Texas in the southeast. This particular prototype, each of the three stores exist individually as separate brands in our history, but we've tried to combine them all under one roof because it's a better experience for the shopper. So to answer the question a little bit about signage, these are all variations. The Murphysboro prototype is unique. It's different than any others, the way the, the structures were built. Typically, some of the features are prototypical, but the whole thing evolved. The patio sign, the slats are actually like a portobello color, which is brand-specific to Rooms to Go Patio. But the elements, the way they're designed here in Murphysboro, are unique and different. The reason we do it on the left instead of just building it to the side of the kids is from a shopping experience, the patio customer is not necessarily coming in and wanting to go through the kids department. So it works better when we build them on opposite sides of the adult store, because oftentimes, the customer is shopping one or not shopping the other. So if there are any other questions about why we're doing it this way, happy to take them, but just wanted to clarify, this will be the first proto in Tennessee. We're very excited about it.
Thank you.
That's cool. Thanks for bringing it here.
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. All right. Our next item is North Church LLC property, Section 4, Lot 7. Final plat for one lot on four acres, zoned MU, CH, and GDO1, located along Medical Center Parkway. Golden I MB Properties LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a companion to the item C you just considered. It is for a final plat to create the one lot of record for the expansion of the Rooms to Go site. It's taking a portion of the CH-zoned property in the Clary Park development and including it within, as a part of North Church LLC, Lot 7, so it's making the lot bigger. They've been able to address staff comments, and so staff would ask that you approve this, subject to all staff comments. And planning, engineering, and landscaping had no comments for this plat. So twice in one meeting, I didn't have any additional comments.
All right.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Item E is North Church LLC, Lot 11. Initial design review of a 23,610 square foot multi-tenant building on 1.5 acres, zoned CH and GDO1, located along Conference Center Boulevard and Avenue Way. Robert and Marie Parks developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. This next item on the agenda is initial design review for Lot 11 of the North Church LLC subdivision. This property has two fronts, one along Conference Center Boulevard, which has a landscape median, and then a second along Avenue Way. It's got two property lines that are adjacent to existing developments. As mentioned, it's approximately a 23,610 square foot building. That's anticipated to have offices, real estate offices, and a gym as a part of the, part of those uses that are allowed here. The property, of course, is zoned Gateway Design Overlay District, which does require it to come to you twice for review and approval. The buildings are a bit unusual in that it's a three-story building connected to a one-story building, and so it looks a bit unusual, particularly for the gateway here. The three-story portion of the building will be primarily where you see the office spaces, and that one story is for that health club as defined in our zoning ordinance. There is a, as I mentioned, there's two fronts to this lot. The Gateway Design Overlay District does require forced side architecture in any case, but it also requires fronts that are oriented towards streets to address the streets. And so that may be something that you want to discuss at a point. The building itself, my page, has three colors of brick, cast stone, and various heights along the base of the building. The roof is flat with raised parapets creating height, and nichihaw panels and steel that are between the windows. So the darker color that you see between the windows is nichihaw, which is a cementitious, a specific brand of cementitious siding. Generally, it's smooth, but not always. The entrance along Conference Center incorporates a prefinished metal canopy. The door that faces Avenue Way is proposed to be just an egress door. There are no elements on that portion of the building to make it project as a front or to add prominence and visibility. Staff asked the architects to be prepared today to discuss, of course, the architecture of the building, but also why they would like to not design the front with the door face, as a front with a lot of prominence. The site plan will be a part of final design review. We have provided preliminary feedback to the civil engineer with the layout, and they're actively working and been able to address many of staff's comments for the site layout. But as this is initial design review, the primary focus is architecture, and it gives an opportunity for the planning commission to give the design team feedback that they will incorporate into their plans prior to final design review and approval. At this time, I'd like to invite the architect to the lectern and the civil engineer, it looks like, to discuss the site. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SCC. I've also got.
Paul Bass.
The architect on the project. So Ms. Green did a good job on the overview of the project. We're excited about the project, think this is exactly the type of building, type of use that we're looking for out here, and think it blends in well with the area. So good quality materials, all brick, cast stone, the nichihaw, which I think you've heard on a few projects over the last couple of years, so I think you're familiar with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the building, though.
You're going to address the reasoning, you know, behind the one-story versus the three-story and the...
Yeah. I was going to say, the one versus three is really just a function of the building. The left side is for the gym or health club area. The three-story is for the office. And so, you know, really, the site itself, from a parking perspective, cannot support the entire building being three stories. And so it's, you know, it's kind of a function of site as well as function of the building. If you look in this area, the side that the one-story building is on butts up against another one-story building. The side that the three-story building is on gets back toward the vintage, and I think those are, that might be at the four-story building right there. And so it's kind of stair steps and just gradually welcomes you back into the rest of the development. So we think that makes a lot of sense from that perspective. The side entrance, I think Paul can probably address a little bit better than I can, so...
And to follow up on that comment, this is kind of a joint venture development. So D1 Training will be taking the single story, and it's not truly a single story. It's almost, it kind of lends itself to more story and a half relative to the three-story component. And then Bob Parks and his group will be taking over the three-story component at least two of the floors, with the third floor being general office. And then referencing the door that Margaret Ann had brought up on the plan east side, that is strictly just as a side egress door for employees through there, what Matt is marking now. So we've got the plan north lobby entry point, and we've also got a plan south. And this one on the east side is purely for ingress/egress, so they do not have to go through the lobby proper, just a relationship with the parking and so forth of that nature.
I think one thing important to point out is, you know, even though that is not the main entrance, we've not tried to turn our back door to that. This is very much, I think, still Margaret Ann's terms, 360-degree architecture, so it's very consistent all the way around the building. So we're not trying to, you know, make an ugly side to this building at all.
And maybe either you all or Ms. Green can help me remember in the process, you know, maybe what I'm struggling with a little bit here is maybe just because there's no landscaping in here. I mean, it just, I was expecting a really wow something, a really wow building in this prominent location within our gateway, and it doesn't quite wow me.
Well, and to the point, we're working with the developer that's on a, that has us on a budget-toake constraint. We're actually doing this stick frame construction, which is a little atypical. But anyway, we are kind of working through that budget. It's kind of a design-build scenario. So we're trying, we're roughly 90% masonry, 95% masonry. So it's good quality materials, just, again, working with the developer, trying to keep it a simple, clean, elegant-style building based on the needs of the end user, which is primarily Bob Parks on the realty side.
Any other comments and questions? I'm sure it meets the minimum requirements. This is initial design review, so any comments or questions, any things you'd like to see before they would come back for a final design review?
Margaret Ann, just to double-check what Kathy just said, you know, in our package, it says... it says we kind of need to be aware of the architecture, aware of a couple of things. Does it meet the minimum requirements?
So the way the zoning ordinance is written for the Gateway Design Overlay District, quite a bit of discretion is given to the planning commission. There's some areas that aren't discretionary. One is that it needs to be a brickstone or rock building, that they can't be primarily EFS or nichihaw. And then another, since the adoption of the design guidelines requires a minimum amount of void space or window space, and they probably have that, at the risk of reading some of, or how the planning, or how the zoning ordinance reads, it says, "The planning commission should discuss the architectural design to determine if its architecture character is in keeping with the GDO standards. The building's exterior architectural expression and design should be compatible with neighboring projects. The size, massing, spatial relationships, organization, architectural treatments, in-character architectural style, details, color, and material are some of the criteria that the planning commission should consider. The architectural design must provide an appropriate level of interest in the roofline. Relate the building's features or articulation to the assets of the site. Emphasize architectural detailing for curb appeal and positive visual impact, especially relating to entrances. And create interest in site design in keeping with the intended character and quality of the GDO district." And those are sentences that I've taken out of the zoning ordinance, and you can see that there's a lot of, like, discretion the planning commission has in determining if the spatial relationships, organizations, detail, style, and color are appropriate. A lot of it has to do with the context of the area. Early on, when I saw this building, there wasn't as much brick, and they did put more on there, so that was something I was able to accomplish. And then I also asked Mr. Bass to do what he could to increase the height of that one-story building, because it was, the juxtaposition of the two, for me, and I'm not planning commission, was, but was a bit off. And so he's added some, I guess, artificial height to that one-story building to kind of help with that. And, you know, this is probably getting into the architect's territory, where he'd like to use his own adjectives as opposed to mine. But the way the zoning ordinance reads, there's quite a bit of discretion that you have. And so it's not so much like numbers and figures next to something, but really, this building as an overall design and the details.
Is there going to be landscape stuff that we don't, that's going to be the minimum requirement, you know, because we got some separate landscape requirement, right?
Sure, so the landscaping isn't as much up for discussion, because we have some minimums in that. The base of the building does require a minimum five-foot-wide strip that has landscaping of shrubs in it. We'd really like for them to layer that and add interest and height to it. What Mr. Bass could do, and what many architects do, particularly in the gateway, are perspective renderings, which is a six-foot person standing at the building looking up. Oftentimes, those perspective renderings will include the, some portrayal of the foundation plantings that are there, and that helps soften the view. And so that doesn't have landscaping in it. Right. And so that, that perspective rendering, their models that they can run and do that to help. And so that may help you see it one way. The gym does have, they did have some doors that they wanted to roll up, so that when, I think, you're working out, you can have a fresh air, but they did not have any of those facing the road. Mr. Taylor, is there one facing the adjacent property at this point to the west? So if I figure out where I am, it's easier for me here, I think, is where those, the entrance to the outside is. There too? Yeah, that's where those little squares are. So yeah, there will be five-foot-wide landscaping. They have added some benches along the entrances, because if it's a multi-tenant building, we find that there's a need there, even though it doesn't trigger formal open space yet. That's something they've added. So I don't know if those perspective renderings help, or if it's the relationship to the scale that you're considering. I think the colors, the material board was here, are in keeping with the character of the area. There's no colors that I think are too out there. But the overall design's certainly within your, in your consideration.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask for that type of a rendering for a final design that shows a little bit of that stuff in there, so we can just make sure, lay our eyes on it?
Yes.
Is that okay? Okay. All right.
I'm sure that...
It helped me, at least.
You know, it's just so...
I think that...
And I'm sure it's a beautiful building. I'm sure it's, I mean, I don't have any problem with any of the materials, like you mentioned on the materials board, that just...
And get this thing photorealistic and include the landscape. So it was just one of those things, due to the timing and so forth, we didn't have the chance to get everything implemented. So for the next go-around, we can have those renderings provided.
I don't know, I guess for me, it's more of the visual interest on the roofline. If we had a little bit, I mean, you have one where it goes up a little bit higher, but if it had it on the other side, or something to break up the monotony of the rooflines on both the one-story and the two-story.
And to your point, it is broken up. I think it's some of the flat-on elevations that kind of, don't pick that up. But like I said, once we provide those renderings, it'll tell the story much better.
I don't know if it makes sense, but I always call these pop-ups, which is not the right term, but to add something like that maybe to here, so you have it in the corner as well, so it's a similar element, add some height there. And I don't know if you need it here or not, but those may be options. I think one of the, Mr. Bass was responding to one of my comments about breaking up the flat roof. The gateway, of course, has a lot of interest on the roofline. You have to have a defined roof, meaning it needs to be in scale proportion to the rest of the building, so not just like a one brick row log, but defined roof. And then you have to have breaks at least every 40 feet, and that's citywide. And so I think these element, I'm not doing a good job here, but these little breaks in the roof were added to kind of vary that roofline, but it may be that that feature that's here, you can add on other portions of the building. I don't know if that would work or not, but it could be something to add more interest in that roofline, and it's, I think, what I heard you say.
Yeah, and I think it's much more so on the one-story building, it seems, but, anyway. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Margaret Ann, are these the front doors right here on this picture we're looking at? Can you see them?
I can't see them, my left eye.
We've actually got two primary entry points.
Do you want to...
Okay.
So yeah, it's, that's one set, and that one serves the D1 side. So the one on the right that I circled is actually the primary entry for Parks, and the one to the left would be the primary entry for D1 Training.
Okay, and this is the Conference Center Boulevard entrance? Is that right? Okay.
And then the door that I asked you to consider on the other road is...
Can I circle?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. Is here, and this is the one that I wanted your feedback on. Did you want, they wanted a discreet exit, and of course, that's you. Then I wondered if you wanted some more enhanced, some more enhancements to that.
And is that Avenue Way, or is that closer to the Medical Center?
That would be Avenue.
That's Avenue Way, okay.
It's here.
Correct. And that was more of a convenience entry point for staff, whereas we've got the D1 egress point there and the primary entry point of the planned north side.
I think it's important, if you look to the north, that is Lazy Boys, that's the back of their building. If you look to, further to the north, that's the Subway Center. Again, it's the back, those are very much service-oriented, and so this entrance, while we have it for ingress egress or discreet entrance, none of those are, nothing is running a long avenue way through there. It's acting very much as the back door. Again, we're not turning our back to this street, but we did not want it to be a prominent entryway. We want that to face Conference Center Boulevard, the bigger classification, the bigger road, the bigger draw here.
But correct me if I'm wrong, there's parking all around the building, right? It's kind of semicircled?
There is, and that, that's why we wanted some sort of entrance. We just don't want it to be portrayed as the, as the main entrance. We want that to face Conference Center Boulevard.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we're ready for a motion. So we can keep moving.
I'll move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next we have North Church Property Lot 18. Initial design review of a 24,658 square foot commercial center gas station located on 3.08 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Silo Hill Lane. Gateway Investments, Inc., LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next item on the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider. Initial design review for Lot 18, which is a part of the North Church Property subdivision. It's near the building you just reviewed, but not adjacent to. It's a couple of streets down. This project is proposed to consist of a commercial center, which has multiple tenants. And I think the easiest way for me to remind you of the project, it's the gas station liquor store at the entrance to the gateway. And when it was reviewed last, the planning commission deferred action on June 16th at the request of the applicant's representative. And when that deferral happened, the planning commission specifically said, "Come back for initial again and final again." And this project to you is presented as initial design review. And so I included copies of the minutes, of course, in the, in the package, the staff comment package. There was quite a bit of discussion initially about the access directly onto Medical Center Parkway. The plan still does not have that direct access. It maintains the two points onto Silo Hill Lane, here and here. And the architecture of the building remains largely unchanged. There is, of course, the convenience market, gasoline canopy, and a multi-tenant in the back with the large tenant on the corner, which is the proposed liquor store. The, the site itself is largely unchanged from when you saw it before during the June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Some of the items discussed during the meeting are that the perimeter landscaping near the retention pond, and this is the retention pond. Be three feet high at planting, so that within 10 years, the shrub should be five to six feet high, and the tree's 46, 60 feet high to screen that. One of the proposals by the applicant was that the signage be restricted to the Gateway Design Overlay District 3 standard. The GDO actually has four sub-districts, GDO 1, 2, 3, and 4. GDO 3 is our most restrictive sub-district of the GDO, and it is mostly the city-owned property along the Gateway Island and some of the large office buildings that you see in that area, where the city is, manages the Owners Association, and those are GDO properties. Those are the ones with, in the city of Murfreesboro, that's the most restrictive signage we have, and so they were proposing to meet those standards. And then we, at that meeting, had a sign administrator available who spoke to what the sign ordinance allows and doesn't allow. There were some questions about shelving backing up to windows, and concerns about the shelves that back up to windows, particularly because the backs of those shelves become by default signed space. We have examples of stores that do that in town, where maybe we were excited about the, the architecture, but then it was, I think it, like, was a disappointment once we saw them putting the shelves and signs in the window. And then the planning commission questioned staff regarding the windows not being blocked and advertisements. Architect stated that the windows in front of the proposed liquor store would be over six feet tall, and that that would, by default, not allow shelvings to be visible, and they think lessen the possibility of having that signage. Mr. Ives provided feedback, and Ms. Stevens provided feedback during that meeting about the signage. And then the planning commission deferred action at the request of the applicant, with it coming back for initial design review. I believe today's intent is, like I said, the plans are unchanged, but is to present to you proposed restrictions for the property. I'd like the applicants to speak to that and to speak, to speak to what they're proposing to do for the property. And then, of course, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Taylor, do you have something prepared for the, to go through the changes for this property? I believe their attorney is present as well.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SCC. So a couple of things. Ms. Green's right, the, the plan itself, as far as layout, is generally consistent with what we had before. Architecture is consistent with what you had approved previously as well. We've also, the architect compiled some street-level renderings as you're coming in off of the interstate coming down Medical Center. If you've driven that way, which I'm sure each of you have, you know, there's large existing trees and vegetation along this stretch. And so we thought it'd be important to, you know, overlay our project in an accurate manner to show how the visibility coming in is extremely limited. I know there was a lot of concern with whether you could see specifically the liquor store as you approached, and so I think the architect has done an extremely good job with these three views that's on the screen now. The bottom left-hand corner is kind of the key, showing where each of these is coming from. And so kind of starting at the bottom right-hand corner, that is the closest one to the interstate. And then over to the right would be the site. And then number two is a little bit closer to the site, and then number three is basically at the beginning of the site. You can start to see the convenience store building more in the right-hand corner there as well. And so you can see those large trees that will stay, those are either in the detention pond or in the city's public right-of-way, so we, we're not taking those down. Matter of fact, we'll plant more trees in addition to what's shown here, doing a very good job screening the project and specifically the liquor store that you had concerns with. And then there should be a copy of the restrictive covenants regarding signage, and I'll let Mr. Reed describe the elements that go into those restrictive covenants and how those are enforced.
Good afternoon, Jeff Reed. I was asked by the developer in this case to put together some restrictive covenants to address some of the issues that were raised at the earlier planning commission meeting. So in response to that, we drafted a proposed declaration of covenants to be recorded in the registrar's office that would basically address two issues, which is basically the signage and lighting that affect the site. And I think in your package, you may have a set of those restrictions, but to tell you specifically what we're proposing is to record a set of restrictive covenants against the property that would be enforceable by any owner on the property, any tenant on the property, and also the city of Murfreesboro. So we're making the city of Murfreesboro a third-party beneficiary of these restrictive covenants. So if there was a violation of any of the terms of these restrictions, not only would the owners on the property have a right to enforce them, and the tenants have a right to enforce them, but the city of Murfreesboro could enforce them as well. So in the event, in the future, you had complaints that the city was receiving from other owners on the gateway in the gateway area, you would have some recourse to pursue should you, the city choose to do that. So to get to the specifics with respect to the restrictions, we have, under section two of the, of the draft, we have, there's, there's two buildings on the site. Building one on the site is basically the convenience store location, and building two is what's been referred to as the liquor store that has the other retail buildings associated with it there. So what the developer has been willing to do is put restrictions down saying, "No displaced signs of any sort shall be allowed in the windows of the liquor wine store." So we're prohibiting displaced signs in the windows altogether in the liquor and wine store, and also in the convenience store. So there will be no displaced signs allowed either in the convenience store or the liquor store. Now, there would be displaced signs allowed in the retail section of that component of the building number two, that could be a Subway or a Sub Shop or something like that. So, but to address the concerns we were hearing from the city, we wanted to go ahead and just prohibit displaced signs altogether in the liquor and wine store, and also prohibit those displaced signs in the convenience store. those displaced signs in the convenience store as well. In addition to that, we are imposing restrictions, saying there'd be no marketing or advertising signage placed on the exteriors of Building Number 1 or 2, except for the name of the businesses that would obviously have to comply with the city's sign ordinance. And the window signage, the window displaced signage in the retail stores of Building Number 2, excluding the liquor store. And to clarify, again, we added additional language saying, again, "There's no displaced signage allowed at all in the windows of the liquor or wine store." To address the issue with shelving, we've added a section in C that says, "No shelving shall be installed in Building Number 2 adjacent to any windows in a manner which is visible from Medical Center Parkway." So to address the concerns that you've had on other projects, we did go ahead and say we will prohibit shelving altogether to be installed in a manner that will be visible from the exterior of the building in Building Number 2. And to address some issues, we had heard about lighting. In D of our restrictions, we say there'd be no LED lighting, colored lighting, neon lighting, laser lighting, flashing lighting, or except for any kind of red emergency lighting that might be required by fire codes. But you will get, so there were some issues we heard about maybe lighting that had happened on some other liquor stores in town. We wanted, there was no intent ever to really have that in this project to begin with. But just to clarify that we would not have those in the liquor store, we thought it best to go ahead and include that in the restrictions and provide that there'd be none of that such lighting on this project. And we did go ahead and just add a couple, so to give the city better enforcement authority and other owners and tenants better enforcement authority in the future should there be any problems out there on the site. We added language that says that all exterior lighting still has to comply with the city of Murfreesboro lighting codes and lighting ordinances. And also the exterior signage must be in compliance with the sign ordinance of the city of Murfreesboro, which you have heard the developer is willing to adopt the strictest sign ordinance requirements you have that will be on top of these restrictive covenants that we would be voluntarily placing on the property. So, and finally, with respect to landscaping, just to confirm that all landscaping would be irrigated and be, have a full irrigation system to ensure whatever landscaping is there will hopefully thrive and get pro and become thicker and provide even better buffers than initially would be provided the day it was planted. So, so with these restrictions, what we're proposing to record on a voluntary basis is to restrict that property basically perpetuity going forward. These will be automatically renewing every 50 years unless someone comes back to the city or some owner approves an amendment or change to them. So, so these restrictions would encumber the property. They would be binding upon any future owner of the property. So if someone bought that land, they would be subject to these restrictive covenants and not be able to get out of them. So, so the developer just wanted to really go over and aboard, over and above to address the concerns that had been expressed with the city. He wants this to be a very nice project. He understands this is at the entrance to the Gateway and something that the city of Murfreesboro won't be proud of, and we do not want to be an embarrassment to the city. And towards those, towards that end, that's why he's asked our office to prepare this draft restrictive covenants, which, you know, assuming the project is recorded, we would record this in the Register's Office to bind the property forever. And I don't know if you have any questions on that, but do I, do we have any other presentation to make?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed. Any have any questions regarding any of these restrictions or any questions from Mr. Reed or Mr. Taylor?
Madam Chair, for the record, I will be abstaining from discussion and vote on this matter.
All right, thank you.
So I may comment just to, because this is something I think I, was that the first meeting, then maybe there was a second meeting that I was not that meeting, at that meeting where we discussed this? But just for the What It's Worth column, in that first meeting, there was some discussion about the appropriateness, you know, of next to the interstate exits and that sort of thing. I brought up to the council subsequent to that, and the council did not choose to make any limitations as far as how close a liquor store should be to an exit. It wasn't my wish, but it was the wish of the council. So I'm, you know, going to try to, I think, sort of do my job as being Rick LaLance on the Planning Commission, but also as a council member on the Planning Commission to get this to the point of the council based on, you know, that was one of my biggest things. And I would say too, that I appreciate the changes that have been made by the applicant. They do look pretty consistent with the concerns that I heard. I don't know that I know exactly what the GDO 3 signage does allow and doesn't. There's one thing that I would just sort of mention to the applicant as we think through what this thing ends up looking like. I struggle with that a little bit with kind of the idea. I just struggle with the, my capability to visualize, looking at it on paper and then what it really looks like in real life a little. I know that Mr. Halliburton, since he's not here, I don't want to speak for him, but I know that he had made a comment about the liquor store there on the corner of Greenland and Old Ascassas, that he kind of thought it was going to look one way and it ended up, I think it was, my perception of what he said was that, you know, the big liquor sign, you know, it just said liquor right there that jumps out at you so strongly, you know, you cannot miss it from a million miles kind of deal. Again, I don't know what the GDO 3, but I really appreciate all the stuff about the windows. And I mean, all that stuff is absolutely better, and I agree and I appreciate it. I would ask, I think at this point, so that by the time maybe it gets to council, that maybe we get a little bit of an idea what that looks like, whether it's maybe a different font or something, that it just isn't one of those things that pops out at you as best we can.
May I clarify that this will not be gone to City Council?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
This is initial design review for a lot in the...
Get those confused, yep.
Sorry. And so what it will do is come back to you for final design review and approval.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Sorry.
Okay. So we could ask for a sample signage? Would that be?
Yeah, so I think it is appropriate. And actually, we expect that signage, even if they don't know the tenants, be shown on the buildings and be shown on the site. They should, they can have the building, but like a square or rectangle where the sign goes, so you can see where it is. So they certainly can prepare an illustration. I think Ms. Schreiber is capable of preparing something that goes in the signage locations. And I would say, my advice would be do the maximum number that you are allowed and maximum size under all these restrictions, so we can see always worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Not that worst-case is the best word, but something that shows all of that.
Yeah, I think I may have seen something like that on at least part of this, but I... I apologize for...
Which number?
Is that done though with these restrictive covenants in mind?
PC 3.
Yeah, because I thought that was the old, what was on the original...
So the location is the same. I don't know that the size itself has been fine-tuned back to the GDO 3, but the location, I think generally portrays what we want there.
Correct. Candace Schreiber, H. Michael Hyman Architects. All of the elevations currently show maximum signage with a dashed green line. When we come back for final, we will double-check and coordinate that with the GDO 3.
Awesome.
These have currently been coordinated with signage ordinances.
All right.
Wonderful.
With all that, I'm going to move for approval unless there's other... Go ahead, yep, yep.
Couple of questions. So I know when he was up, when he was talking about liquor store, wine store, but if you had a different tenant, let's say a vape store, would this apply for them to? I'm more looking for, is it applying to the building or is it applying to if it is a liquor store or a wine store?
Currently, the way it reads, it applies to liquor or wine store in Building Number 2. So Building Number 1, there's no displaced signage at all allowed. So as it is written now, in Building Number 2, which is where the liquor store is, it would only apply to liquor or wine store. So if you're wanting to add that to the additional larger component of the building, I don't know if there's any opposition to that. We could look at that, bring that back when you go.
For final, yeah, could you bring that before?
So you're saying then, Mr. Reed, if they happen to move the liquor store from Building 1 to Building 2 or vice versa or whatever, then all of a sudden the restrictions wouldn't apply?
No, the way this reads, any liquor or wine store prohibits display window signage altogether.
On this track?
Regardless of whether it's on Building Number 1 or Building Number 2. So no liquor or wine store will be allowed to have any window signage, so.
But if, but if Building 2 was something else other than a liquor store, it would allow all the window signage and all that?
As it is currently written.
Okay.
That's an issue with the city. We can address that. We do, I think we do want to be able to preserve the right to have window signage in the retail, smaller retail section of that Building Number 2, because we very well could have some fast food type places, sub-shops and that type of thing that might want to have window signage. And typically, they typically would have it.
And I think that would be subject to the...
My recollection too, I think that you guys talked about the convenience store, that's a part of the gas station, often has beer and things for sale, tobacco products. I thought that your recollection maybe was, or that some of your concerns were with the convenience market. So I'm not sure if you want to tie that in with the liquor store discussion.
And that's, that is Building 1, right?
Yeah, Building Number 1 is the convenience store, yes. So displaced signage is prohibited altogether in Building Number 1.
Okay. So could we say, could, I think, I think his, your point is what I think it is, which is, I think I would agree with the idea of asking to not necessarily limit that to just a liquor store in Building Number 2. Is that where you're kind of going or?
It is. I, but I agree with him in the sense that if it's...
If it's a restaurant.
If it's a restaurant or certain type, they can do window signs. But if it's a vape store, then you got the same issue as, or if it's a Cash America. You understand what I'm saying?
There were some restricted uses too.
Yeah, and that's the way, that's the only...
So a vape store, I believe, would be defined following its category of beer and tobacco store, and so it is, it is not an allowed use in the GDO.
Okay, then that's kind of where I was wanting to understand. Okay, we're good.
Okay, so with respect to the big building component in Building Number 2, is the city saying that they would want us to prohibit displaced signage altogether or only if it's a wine or liquor store? Or, and I'm asking for comments if there are any.
I would expect you to be able to allow the same type of signage that you would allow in another building in a lot right across the street, if it happened to be a Subway shop or a fast food store or a retail store, the Lazy Boy store, whatever's over there. We're not trying to...
I don't think we're trying to limit it.
I don't believe.
I think he addressed my concern in that it's not allowed.
Very good.
We're good.
All right.
Does that...
That makes sense to me.
Retail, restaurant, I think we would expect...
In the end, if there's any liquor or wine store on the site, we would understand they're not allowed to have window signage. And that's what we're putting restrictions down against.
Okay.
Liquor, wine, beer, does that, does that...
I can add beer to it.
Beer and tobacco, can't you?
We can add that to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm, so I'm gonna...
Can I say?
Councilman, you want me to say it?
Yes, I do, I want you to say it.
Okay. I would suggest that we, assuming you want to approve this today, our initial design review, that we hold off approving, defer approval of the signage restriction to final design review. And Jeff and Rumba and I worked, I think we've heard your concerns that are good concerns that don't jump out of the page when you just look at it. We'll look at this and do our best to clarify this to see what...
Yep, you comfortable with that? Yep, all right.
We'll bring back a probably somewhat revised document for the next time.
All right. So then...
We got the idea, we want signage restrictions and...
So then I don't, I just basically, I need, I can make a motion to approve the initial plat, subject to staff comments.
Initial design review.
The initial design review and subject to staff comments, and then...
That's one of the comments.
And that's really it?
That's all, I think that's...
I don't, okay. All right.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much.
One abstention.
And one abstention, thank you. Moving on to Plats and Plans. Our first item is Carpenter Group Lot 8, suites at Midtown. It's a site plan review for 14,206 square feet. Commercial center on 2.1 acres, zoned heavy industrial, located along Ridgely Drive. Purtle Family Limited Partnership is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. I'm enjoying all of our one-on-one time today.
We are keeping you busy today.
Busy as we like to be. I have an item that I'm bringing to you under Plats and Plans that may ordinarily qualify for administrative review and approval. It is for a little over 14,000 square feet of commercial space on 2.1 acres, that zoned heavy industrial district. It is behind the Burger King, Dunkin' Donuts, along Memorial Boulevard, and just south of Medical Center Parkway, behind the Beauty Lounge and the Dollar General. The, the reason I'm bringing this plan to you under a regular business item is because the Planning Commission has had significant discussions on the site in the past. And the last time the Planning Commission considered the item was on September 19th, 2018, and I did include copies of those minutes in the package that I provided for you. The developer has, has not moved forward with development plans that were approved in 2018 as such. They are required to come back and get them re-approved. There are some changes with this site plan that were not a part of the 2018 plan, but largely they are consistent with what was considered before. The site itself has two buildings, one larger building that is close to the private drive with frontage on Ridgely, and then a smaller building B, which may be a single-tenant or two-tenant building because of the two entrances. The, the use is classified as a commercial center, and it's permitted by right in the zoning, so long as the retail establishments, office, personal service establishments are planned, constructed, and managed as a total entity, and that restaurant use occupies no more than 35% of the gross floor area. The, the notes have been added to the site plan that restrict the amount of restaurant space, so we believe that's what will be done here. So I know there's been a little bit of change in the Planning Commission since the time it was initially considered, so I'll just give you some background. Behind the Dunkin' Donuts Commercial Center, the Burger King, between Dollar General and the Beauty Lounge, there's a private drive that is under private ownership. It's not public, which means it's managed and constructed and maintained differently. If it were a public street, the city, of course, would be responsible for maintaining the, the surface itself. We would be responsible for paying Middle Tennessee Electric a light bill to light the property, and we would be responsible for any of the public drainage that goes on the property. Because this is a private drive, it's maintained, managed by a private Owners Association, which consists of several lots within the subdivision. When this came to Planning Commission in 2018, Planning Commission expressed some very serious concerns with the condition of that private road. Although it is private ownership, people use it, it is a public access. So it's publicly accessed, but it's privately owned. Some of the concerns that the Planning Commission had were that it's very, very dark at night because there are no streetlights. Streetlights on a private drive are provided by the builders of each lot or the developer of the overall development. So we would be expecting the individual lots to come in and put lighting there. The fallacy in that is that if it takes 10, 12, 15 years for something to develop, that means it sits there for 10, 12, 15 years without lighting. And so there are several lots on the private, that have frontage on the private drive that aren't built yet. One is for an I, Dr., this lot, and some other lots. Another concern that was brought up the Planning Commission was that they should, they expressed concern with the failures in the pavement, potholes, that's basically what that means. Water being trapped, particularly because there's a large detention pond, I think it's here, and the water's going that area, but we know, but Planning Commission noticed that in that curve particularly, water would get trapped and sit there and be a little lake for the water fowl that live nearby. And then the lack of lighting. In addition to other staff comments, Planning Commission's motion, when they recommended it be approved, subject to all staff comments, were that this lot, which actually has, let me take this away, this lot is here. It actually has all this portion of private drive as a part of its lot. So the condition was that they improve the entire road network as a part of Lot A, and that additional streetlights along the private drive be added on Lot A. As I mentioned, I included minutes in the area in the, in the package for you to consider. I did want the applicant to have an opportunity to come before you, tell you what's changed since then, what the plan is, how they plan to move forward. And if you still have some concerns, then of course we can add those to our comments. We would recommend that if you do approve it, your approval would be subject to all staff comments. The site plan itself, Mr. Taylor's team has been able to address most of our comments. But we did have some remaining architectural comments and site plan comments, which are generally in scale with those that... generally in scale with those that we can make sure get addressed prior to permits. But I did want Mr. Taylor to come speak about those three items, pavement failure, trapped water, streetlight, that was brought up by the planning commission in 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SCC. I'll go over what has changed. So, everything in blue has received its surface course of asphalt since that meeting. This trapped water right here has been, that curb cut's been cleaned up, they've installed a concrete swell, so that is no longer holding water. And the street lighting along that section, I don't think is installed yet. We were anticipating that to come with the installation of this, because that drive is actually on that project's property. And then, with this plan, you'll see, we have noted the rest of the road would be topped with this project, so it'd be tied to the C of O here. And then, one thing that's not reflected in here, but we did commit to it inside of our written responses to Margaret Ann, is that we would install lighting along this road. The gentleman does our lighting plan at COVID during the time and was out sick, so we could not update our plan during that response in recent middle timeframe. So I will be happy to answer any questions now, if you have any. And we are, I talked to Architect this morning about the architectural comments that Ms. Green mentioned, and he's working to increase the window size, I think is the primary thing that was outstanding there, so.
Can you just confirm for me, Mr. Taylor, so on that entire private road, is there any lighting along through there at all?
The only lighting on there today is what might be spilled over from, say Burger King, or the bank, or is it Office Max or Depot? I can't, I don't remember the difference. But no dedicated streetlights along there right now.
And is that part of what we're talking about? We're talking about actual streetlights, not just spillover lighting from all the different properties?
Yes, ma'am. We would, now, I did not do the design for any of those three, and so I don't know if, back then, we were doing photometric plans, those were outside the GDO, so it's very likely that we were not. So I think there's probably some spillover going there today, because it was just what happened back then. But we were gonna add, I think, we were thinking about three streetlights along this section by itself, Ms. Jones.
Okay. And then, would the rest of the private street be addressed and taken care of, as it seems to have been supposed to have happened prior to this time, and it hasn't happened?
So, that part right there, we had proposed to come with the development of this, which has sold and is under the control of a, I'll call him an eye doctor, that's probably an insult, but, and so, you all have actually approved that site plan once, I think it's been renewed once or twice. I'm not sure why he has not pursued that particular project.
But the paving on the entire section, all the way along, has been done?
Yes, ma'am. The paving along here has already been installed and fixed the drainage at the corner that Ms. Green talked about. We would finish the rest of this as a part of this project. That and the streetlights along that same section right here would all be tied to the C of O on this project. And so, the city has a very good, I call it a leverage point, if you will, to make sure those items happen.
And then, just in general, is there something in place regarding this whole project on a go-forward basis, so the next time this all needs to be repaved, or...
Yes, ma'am. They do have an owners association. I will say that it was very loosely organized to begin with, since Mr. Pirtle bought this. When Mr. Pirtle bought it, he bought, I think the whole property was shaped something like that. He bought it from the bank during, or maybe coming out of the downturn. And so he has come back in and, with his relationships, has reorganized and made that a little more firm commitment. It did take some effort on his part, because, you know, as all owners associations that are not active, he had to work through some corporate bureaucracy between those parties, I believe, so, but he has engaged though, engaged them successfully on what he's already done out there today.
Okay. Other comments or questions? We have one abstention. So this is a site plan review. Lot 8 Suites at Midtown.
I guess if there's no other comments, then I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
And we had one abstention. Does it count when he's not sitting here? Okay. Next, item B is the Joby Jackson Industrial Site Plan for two new industrial warehouse distribution buildings totaling approximately 448,760 square feet on 30.4 acres, zoned light industrial located along Joby Jackson Parkway, Lincoln Property Company developer. Ms. Smith, welcome. Good afternoon.
We're in the home stretch.
Yes.
Under Plats and Plans, item B, we have the Joby Jackson Industrial Project. This particular project, as you can see on the above map, involves five full parcels located off of Joby Jackson, with a portion of a parcel, this northerly one, that actually extends further, but the project only involves that portion that's in the city limits. And the plat that you looked at earlier would actually separate the bigger portion of the parcel behind it with the front section. So that would leave 30.4 acres for the site to develop. When we were looking at it, it actually contains two buildings on the property. One more, there we go. So it has this smaller building in the front, which is about 70,000 square feet. This one in the back contains about 380,000 square feet. The project involves actually consolidating, reconfiguring those lots to where the front lot would be its own, the back would be its own portion, and then there would be an access easement that comes all the way around this building and back out, so that it provides a non-landlocked parcel. The particular use is a speculative industrial warehouse distribution, where it would have accessory offices that are located on these four corners of the larger building, as well as one in the center section of the back building, as well as ones on the corners of the smaller building. Staff comments actually showed just a few more improvements wanted at this particular area, which was going to be highly visible, so that its corner would look very similar to the opposite corner in this location. So in looking at the elevations for those, it may be a little bit hard to see in here because it's a very large building, but this is the elevation that we're talking about. It has a very small door here that's outside of what I would call the canopy area, and we are asking that it would reflect the same elevation as this particular corner. They are proposed to be all textured formal linear patterned tilt-up concrete walls in neutral gray tones, as shown on the side here, and in the inset. And this particular project site, there was a traffic analysis that was done that our traffic division did take a look at, and there is a staff condition under the engineering section, item one, that addresses that for a fair share portion of estimated traffic signal in the vicinity. And then, lastly, there's several staff comments on the particular project that are listed there. So with that, the improvements that they would include as part of the project, and the reason why it's coming before planning commission, is it would have a sanitary sewer main that comes out and onto the site, so that it's within the appropriate distances as required by our sewer ordinance, that would be a city facility. So with that, if there's any questions, this is just a straight site plan review, no public hearing required on it, and we would ask that if it's approved, that it would be subject to meeting all staff comments, as shown in the attachment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions regarding this site plan? I know it's rather large. Got to overlook it, but, but a large open space.
Ms. Jones, I'm Brendan Bowles with Kimley Horn Associates, here representing the developer today. I'd like to just say thank you to the staff for working with us on this project, and we do agree with staff comments and working on the elevations to improve that one corner that was brought up.
Great. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Is it zoned heavy industrial all around this?
I'm just double checking. Pretty sure.
On the undeveloped side?
It's light industrial.
On the undeveloped side?
Yes, sir. So all on this side of the street. I can't remember, though, on the other side whether some of it's CH across the street.
Just neighbors, so we're fine. There are no questions. I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is Middle Tennessee Electric Corporate Campus Site Plan for approximately 86,084 square feet. Building additions on 15.3 acres, zoned heavy industrial, located along New Salem Highway and Commercial Court, MTE Developer. Ms. Smith.
So, another particular project for your consideration. As you can see on the site plan, the existing project site consists of two parcels, which you took action on the plat map previously to this particular meeting. We've been working diligently on the building and with the applicant, and they're making sure we've got the right one. In the site layout, they are looking at an addition to the northerly side of the existing corporate building, the addition of two drive-through lanes for payment drop-off with a canopy in place, some additional parking improvements, and that's at the corporate campus, leaving kind of the lay-down yard in place as is. And then the southerly building demolishing all existing structures on site and building a new structure to accommodate their operations center of 64,500 square foot building, that would incorporate office, warehouse, truck bays, and storage. This property is designated heavy industrial, and it does have CUD as the adjacent property to the south. This particular project, as we were working with staff on some of the specific requirements that came out of the traffic analysis, is we have this section of New Salem Highway, which is being, of course, changed to five lanes, that the city will have a connector road, if you can see in this very light yellow delineation, that would come out onto the intersection and be a future signalized intersection, which the city wants to see CUD and MTE have a coordinated drive entrance. We ask that they provide a conceptual plan layout that would generally show that location if it split the two property lines. And in looking at the staff comments, there's a comment that talks about that particular drive entrance. In order to get clarification for both the applicant, which they wanted some clarification on that particular section, I reached back out to our engineering divisions and proposed some new additional staff language that I'd like to read into the record, which we have shared with the applicant, and we believe the applicant is in agreement with. And thank you, Mr. Ives, for also helping provide some language in this. We tried to provide as concisely as possible. But it would be to prepare for the construction of a future signalized connector road. Excuse me. There we go. From New Salem Highway to River Rock Boulevard, adjacent to the MTE site, a traffic signal access easement shall be recorded along MTE's southwesterly property line that would be right in this location, and that it would be 42 feet in width for a depth of 100 feet with a 45-degree cord at the street for the purpose of providing half of the driveway for a future joint access for MTE and CUD aligned with the future connector road. And that we ask that a recorded easement shall be incorporated into the plat consolidation map prior to the certificate of occupancy. So because the timing of this alignment may be five or 10 years off, we wanted to make sure that that gave enough time for those things to come to fruition, final engineer drawings to come through, and it preserves that access easement in the long term, so we're not putting any new facilities in place, and wherever they may have opportunities, if they're doing other improvements in the future, again, it's a recorded easement, not necessarily a right-of-way. In talking to our traffic department, we don't need it as a right-of-way, it's not going to be a through street, it'll be a dead-end street, but that 100 feet allows us to put down anything that we might need for signals in the pavement or striping to accommodate basically three outbound lanes and one inbound lane. So I would like to add that to staff comments, that is different from your staff report. And then just a high level, they are providing a nice architecture on the site that is coordinated with the existing facilities. All of those buildings, if you may recall, are brick-faced, as well as some stoneworks. So you'll see in these sections, this is their revised drawing, working with staff on some of those improvement areas, and the only outstanding item we have that I believe they're willing to work with is just this canopy. We did not have a zoomed-in area of that particular feature, but it will sit out in front of the building by quite a few feet and be highly visible. So we wanted to make sure to incorporate probably a cornice that would match the main building style. And then on the operations center building, and here you can see some of those materials, and here's the canopy that we're looking at, should make an appropriate incorporation versus the shown canopy here, which is not as nice-looking in comparison to the building. And then lastly, the back buildings, where the operations center is, they're looking at having metal-type materials on the backside. We just want to make sure that we incorporate the appropriate architectural metals into that building. And you can see here, they pull a lot of the same elements at their office portion of the building, and follow the design guidelines of that section of our ordinance. And then, on the opposite sides, it's more of an industrial use, so they can follow the industrial section requirements. And with that, that is all of staff's comments for it, so if you should approve the project today, we ask that it be included with all staff comments, including those that are listed today. And then with that, we do have representatives from MTE, their architecture, and MTE itself, here if you have any questions. And this is not a required public hearing, but it only is a review and approval by planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any, do you all have any thing you want to say, while you've sat here all this time, to...
James Goliath, CT Consultants. Now, just thank you for the opportunity to be here, and Ms. Smith did a great job of overview, and we're just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Questions coming? Okay. Thank you very much. And then I guess we're ready for a motion.
If there are none, I'll make a motion with all staff comments. What kind of motion? Sorry.
Second.
Motion to approve with all staff comments and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all very much. Next, we're moving on to new business. This will be our section... Next, we're moving on to new business. This will be our section. We'll review and schedule public hearings for these items. Our first item is a mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider abandonment of the right-of-way of Robert Rose Drive. Matt Taylor is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Our first item of new business is for you to consider scheduling a public hearing on November 3rd for a request we've received to abandon the smallest portion of right-of-way. Let me get through Ms. Smith's presentations here in our packet so that we can move on. During the zoning process for Clary Park... Here we are. When we saw that the master plan for that property was going to change from what was originally reviewed and approved, we had anticipated a road connection being made at Gravit Street. Gravit is a private drive located within the Henley Station development. There was going to be a road that street that went all the way to Medical Center Parkway. The PUD changed the future street networks and alignment, and so since we do not anticipate a public road anymore, we ask the applicants to clean up the area and remove that portion of right-of-way. So, just the little red shape adjacent to the word "Robert" is the portion of Robert Rose Drive, which is being studied for abandonment. I've currently got a memo out to various utilities and department heads requesting they study the area to see if there is any impact to their ability to provide services to our citizens, and if there is, they're getting back with me to let me know. So far, I think it will be a relatively easy right-of-way to abandon, and it would be consistent with the zoning plan and master plan that we have for the property. We would ask that you schedule the public hearing November 3rd.
Okay. Any questions or comments? And if not, we need to schedule a public hearing for November 3rd.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item B is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 19 acres located along Florence Road. Sharon Annette, Cynthia Wilson... Excuse me, Cynthia Williams, Deborah Cohen are the applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you again. We are here to request that you schedule a public hearing to consider a petition for annexation. The planning department's received from the three property owners who own the property shaded orange on the map before you. It is... Has a call-out bubble that says "Property to be Annexed." That property is owned by three different property owners, and they have all three signs that consent for annexation. It's about 18.8 acres in size. After the city received that application or petition for annexation, we saw that there was a 10-foot-wide strip of right-of-way adjacent to the property, of Florence Road right-of-way, that is in the pink color on the screen. It's very difficult to see if you can. It's here. And so, the majority of that right-of-way is already in the city, but an additional 10 feet was acquired at some point, and that 10 feet's in the county. So, what we would ask is that entire length of Florence Road right-of-way adjacent to this property, the two parcels to the north, be studied for annexation. And then Mr. Blomley suggested that we also include a not contiguous section of Florence Road right-of-way to the south. That's in the hot pink area on the map before you now. You can see that it is quite a bit to the south of the property, but it is between two sections of Florence Road that are already in the city. Florence Road, I believe in 2004, 2005, 2005, '06, that timeframe, was reconstructed by the City of Murfreesboro. We had a contract with the county, but the city did the work to improve it. So, the road work that you see was done mostly by the city. We would also like to study that segment of right-of-way for annexation when we study the requested area. So, we ask that you schedule a public hearing on November 3rd. I will have a plan of services available for your consideration throughout the same evening.
So, can I just ask, is the 19 acres that these three ladies are requesting, does it include all these right-of-way too, or are the right-of-way in the pinks, that's in addition to the property that they're requesting annexation of?
Those two portions of right-of-way were not at the request of those three property owners, but were at the request of the city, and we are required to go to the Rutherford County Road Board and petition them for approval of the annexation. I know that happened for the southernmost segment.
But that is all included as a part of this one item?
We're studying it and annexing it as far as part of one item, but the zoning will be the topic of the next item, and the zoning will not be regarding the right-of-way.
Okay. So, we're looking for a public hearing on November 3rd regarding item B.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Okay. We are about to wake up here just a minute. We've just got a few more to go. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item C, zoning application for approximately 16.7 acres to be zoned RS6 and approximately 2.1 acres to be zoned CF simultaneous with annexation located along Florence Road. Alcorn Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Item 7C is a companion to the annexation request which you just considered. It is for, though, just the properties for which annexation has been requested. You can see the applicant for the rezoning is different than applicant for the annexation. We do require annexation petitions to be made by the current property owners. However, rezoning applications can be made by property owners or entities, individuals with contractual interest in the property. The applicant for this property is Alcorn Properties, David Alcorn, to my left, your right, and is representing the rezoning request for this property. Property itself is being asked for you to consider to be zoned two different categories. The orange closest to Florence Road is proposed to be commercial fringe district, and that's about 2.1 acres. The majority of the property, that's shaded yellow on the map that I have before you, is about 16.7 acres, and the request is to zone that RS6 residential, single-family district with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The city's comprehensive plan suggests that larger lot size are more appropriate in this area, considering what's to the north and south, RS10, 12, or 15-square-foot lots. However, there's something different about this property that we think merits a discussion and a consideration of the RS6 zoning, which allows a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. That is a very... A five-lane city street is proposed to go right through this property, and it's a part of a larger connection that will... Let's see if I've got a... We're zoomed out. I don't think I have a zoomed-out map for you, but it will make an east-west connection, which the city believes is important for future management of our traffic and our community. Because there's a five-lane road proposing to go right through the middle of this property, the city has partnered with Alcorn Properties for a contract, and the details of this, we may ask Mr. Huddleston to speak on a little bit more, but where they would donate that right-of-way to the city and construct three of the five lanes of traffic with the development. Now, the development of this property may or may not be by Alcorn Properties, but the contract that will be going to city council will specify some details in the proposed development. So, sometimes we bring planned developments to you. In this case, staff is bringing to you bulk zoning requests because we believe there are additional criteria and safeguards that can apply the property based on the fact that a contract will be reviewed and required to be approved by the city council. And I have on the screen generally for bulk zoning, we don't put a lot of merit into exhibits that are submitted because they can do any type of development that's allowed in the zoning ordinance. But with that five-lane road, we have a good idea of where that's going. We've asked them to do some engineering on that, and that's what you see before you. And then you can see the potential lot layouts on either side. The portion that's closest to Florence Road, as I mentioned, could possibly be two commercial lots. Initially, they considered commercial highway. We asked for them to maybe pull back a little bit to do commercial fringe, although it is on a what may be a minor arterial in the future. Across Florence Road is a lot of undeveloped property, but there's also a lot of zoning across Florence Road. Let's see if my zoning map may be too small for you guys to see. You can almost see there's a commercial fringe property. It's all in gray here. RSA Type 2 is townhomes. RS6 is the same small-lot subdivision. So, what's on this side of Florence Road is mostly RS10s and 12s, some 15s, but what's across Florence Road are smaller lot, more intense developments. So, the intersection of Florence Road with this future five-lane, we thought it made sense to request for that to be commercial instead of residential right there on that intersection. So, this is the request before you. We'd ask you schedule a public hearing November 3rd, the same night as the annexation of the property. Any questions? Mr. Huddleston, myself are here, as well as the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions? And if not, we are looking for a motion to set a public hearing on November 3rd.
I'll make a motion for public hearing on November 3rd.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
That's it for me. Thank you for a pleasant afternoon.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Can't think of anybody better.
Hard work on all these items. We appreciate the help. Our next item, item D, is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 25 acres located along New Salem Highway. Salem Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush, welcome.
Hey. Good afternoon, everybody. How are you? What we have before us is a request to annex property that's located out on the west end of town off of New Salem Highway. So, it runs along the east side. The Rockvale School is towards the south, and there's some other county subdivisions in the similar area, and then a city subdivision is to the west. Simultaneous with this application is a request to zone the property to commercial highway along the frontage and RS6, single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size towards the rear of the property. The property is 25 acres and is developed currently with one single-family residence and some ancillary buildings adjacent to that. So, the property is located within the city's urban growth area boundary. Staff is currently preparing a plan of services for the proposed annexation. Plan of services will be presented to the planning commission at the public hearing, and staff is asking for a public hearing to be scheduled for November 3rd, 2021. The applicant's representative, Mr. Matt Taylor from SCC, is here in the audience. Do you have any additional questions about the annexation?
Okay. Any questions regarding this annexation request? If not, I would like a public hearing on November 3rd.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for November 3rd.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the zoning application for approximately 2.8 acres located along New Salem Highway to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation and approximately 22.2 acres to be zoned RS6 simultaneous with annexation. Salem Properties, Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So, this is the companion zoning request application for the property. The applicant is Salem Properties Incorporated. As indicated before, the property is currently developed with a single-family residence. They are proposing two bulk zones. CH, which is highway commercial, is located along the frontage, and RS6, which are 6,000-square-foot, single-family detached housing units, will be located along the rear end or the easterly end of the property. Once the roads are in and the detention ponds are in, generally, the 6,000-square-foot lots, the density would end up... Oh, actually, sorry to say, the applicant has indicated that they were willing to do RS8. The map is incorrect.
And...
That's why Matthew's laughing at me.
Well, that was kind of... There were some last-minute moving parts, and Mr. Taylor said he would like to get credit for working with staff and increase. But I think some of the things in the agenda packet got updated to say RS8. Some of it did not, so we apologize for the confusion. That was a last-minute change before the agenda went out.
It was a small agenda, so we...
Right.
Long laugh.
We should have focused more on that.
So, it will go and be published as a request for RS8?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll proceed. So, any notification for RS6, you can always decrease your density. You just cannot increase it. So, I apologize, Mr. Taylor. And as indicated in prior hearings, the RS8 zoning district has recently been updated. That does now require the building materials to be made of brick, stone, or cementitious siding, which helps reduce any potential for fire damage. The adjacent zoning, as indicated on the map before you, is CH, again to the north along the frontage, RS15, and OG, and RS6 along the north and easterly sides. The RS6 portion is under construction right now for Salem Landing subdivision. The RS15 and the OG is vacant. Across the street is RS10 subdivision, which is Carlton Landing. And then the properties to the south are developed with single-family residents located in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County. The future land use map for Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan indicates that suburban residential is the most appropriate land use character for this property. Suburban land use is primarily the larger lots, or RS10, RS12, and RS15. So, in this case, the proposed zoning is not consistent, neither for the commercial or for the RS8. However, within the text of the future land use chapter in our comprehensive plan, it does talk about clustering and allowing a smaller lot size to be developed as long as there's clustering and greater open space that is provided. And with discussions with the applicant's representative, that is pretty much what they are proposing. There are some large areas for detention and some open space, so the overall density would be lower than what you would normally get with an RS8 subdivision. They are proposing approximately 73 lots, and that is a 3.3 dwelling units per acre density. So, in that case, with the extra open space and the clustering, it would, for the residential portion, be consistent with the characteristics of our future land use map, and just the CH portion would be inconsistent. So, staff is supporting the zoning request that is before us today. The RS8 would be compatible, as just described, with the context of that characteristics of the more suburban residential. And then the portion that's proposed for CH is not consistent, but because it is fronting along a highway and there is CH to the north, staff feels that this is an appropriate time to deviate from the future land use map. It would be something that would be developed with commercial, similar to other things along that highway frontage. Staff is asking for this item to be scheduled for a public hearing. November 3rd is the date we're asking for. And again, Mr. Taylor's here in the audience. If you have any questions about the zoning. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, we're looking for a public hearing on November 3rd.
Please for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And let's see. Next, we are moving on to a zoning application for approximately 82.5 acres located along Beals Road to be rezoned from RS6, RS10, and RS12 to PRD, the Greystone PRD, and approximately 123 acres located along Beals Road and Double Springs Road to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Meritage Homes is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon. You may recall at last week's meeting, I believe, we had the annexation portion of the project, which is shown here in the powder blue, moving a little bit ahead of the regular request for the PRD. The existing property that's within the city limits is multiple zone districts to include RS6, RS10, RS12, and then, of course, county RM to the side. They are looking at the PRD in this particular case in order to construct 303 single-family detached houses on approximately 6,500 square-foot lots, as well as 100 single-family attached townhome products. Given the size of this particular parcel and the fact that it would be served by a step system, the 205 acres of the land equates to 1.9... step system, the 205 acres of the land equates to 1.96 units to the acre for this particular piece. The area is in our land use map and is designated as, double-check, suburban residential on that particular site and public institutional in the center section. We're not quite sure where that came from, but we believe that the suburban residential dwelling units per acre is in a range of 2 to 3.5 units per acre, and so this application is less than that particular requirement. In looking at this particular project, and of a special note, is there are major connector points being provided with the application, first of which would be a connector road that connects to the Farmhouse Downs subdivision, that's to the north, that would provide connectivity all the way from 70 S or John Bragg Highway, all the way down to this point here on Veals Road, and then future alignment opportunities being allowed south of that area and tie back into Erby. The other connection points will be to the east, where there's an existing subdivision connector road. Second connector road here is in the middle of the wetlands, and so they are proposing to not connect a second road in that particular section, but provide an appropriate turnaround. And then they would be also providing another access point from the Farmhouse Downs to the north into the subdivision and out Double Springs Lane, so that'll provide a little bit more flow of traffic north-south through the area, and then two access points on Veals Road. And again, as shown here, the orange area is in our MTP roadway plan as a three-lane roadway, so we did put that comment in for some items to verify and work through, as well as there's a connector road that provides in this area going east-west. There is a request, and I believe we've just received the traffic analysis for this particular project, so we do have several moving points as we're going towards a public hearing, as was listed in your staff report. First and foremost, just looking at... Boy, this is very sensitive. There we go. So as you can see on the layout, those items in yellow are larger lots with a little bit more size to them, and then the smaller lots are shown in these smaller squares. And then the townhome product, they're looking at the project interior off of private streets. We believe that the items that are outstanding can be worked through. We're working on improving the proposed architecture. We just received some comparison on RSA Type 2 standards for the townhomes, potentially increasing the collector road that north-south, receiving, evaluating that traffic report and evaluating. And then we're meeting with internal city teams to discuss all collector or connector roads on this this week. So we would like to set the public hearing for your November 3rd date. We believe we can get through all those items between now and then, and the applicant is here if there's any questions, but this is just a initial discussion to get you familiar with the project and just think in your mind it would hopefully marry up with the council for the annexation by the time that it gets in that particular venue.
Before we schedule this, can I... The revisions to the street design specifications, I guess that we're getting ready to also So there's just a number of minutes and hours in the day for these things, and having seven, you know, public hearings can get long, whether or not there's a whole lot of public input or not. I'm assuming that street design specifications, is that going to be simple, short, whatever necessarily, or is it going to be pretty simple and short, you think? All right.
I think if Ms. Emerson has anything to do with it, it'll be simple and short.
All right. Excellent. That's what I'm talking about.
...a day meeting for that public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, gee, bad day meeting.
We got annexations, zonings, I mean, those things just take a long time.
So is it possible for us to be thinking about a December public hearing for this Item F? Is that...
I'm not certain what the applicant...
Well, I'm not...
Is that what you're asking?
I'm not really asking. I'd say it that way. I'm not trying to be like that, but I mean, we got to set this up where we can manage this. I mean, four hours at a time is maybe...
Mr. Lance, looking at the items that we have, 7A, the mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment, should be very quick. The annexation on Florence Road, I think, will be relatively quick. The zoning on Florence Road, potentially some discussion on that one. The annexation on New Salem Highway, generally, the annexations these days are not very lengthy because we don't forcibly annex anybody, so usually the public hearings on annexations are pretty straightforward, as long as we can serve them. Potentially some discussion on Item E, and then this one, and the street specs. You know, we generally have public hearings at our night meetings.
That one I'm fine with. Yeah, I mean, I was getting a little bit...
You know, it's an annexation and zoning and...
I know. That's what I mean. We're getting to... It's looking... I mean, that turns six into 12, you know? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no. No, each...
I'm saying it's kind of...
It goes together.
They're joined up.
You're talking about it goes together. I got you. I got you. Check it out.
Right.
It's not like...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We would have a maximum of seven public hearings.
The main question I had was really about the street thing, that if that was going to be something that was going to go, you know, a 30-minute presentation to talk about, you know, a bunch of stuff, and then we have to start getting into how tall the street light has to be and that, you know, that...
I think that a lot of... And Ms. Emerson can correct me, but I think a lot of the revisions to the street specs are kind of housekeeping in nature.
Okay. I'm going to move for approval to set the public hearing for November 3rd on...
Item F.
Item F.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And Item... Thank you, Ms. Smith. Item G will be the revisions. Don't be packing up yet. We've got...
Oh, I got other business. I got other business to go through, y'all.
Still, but we got... Item G is revisions to the Murfreesboro Street Design Specifications. City of Murfreesboro Public Infrastructure Department is the applicant. Ms. Emerson?
Hello. As Matthew referred to, these are mainly housekeeping. The design specifications haven't been updated since July of 2009. Since that time, there's been some ADA requirement changes, the city department name changes, an adoption of a new major transportation plan, changes to TDOT standards, and a new addition of the policy of geometric design of highways and streets. So all those things have been references. I've given you a detailed list of every page that's been changed and the changes that have been made on those pages. So with those changes, I'd like to schedule this as a daytime meeting because the stakeholders that would have input are the professional engineering firms and stuff that would work during the daytime and would be able to attend the meeting.
So did you have a requested date?
November 17.
November 17.
Yes, ma'am.
Shall we move?
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Schedule for November 17. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have staff reports and other business, and as you know, we have at least one item on there because we moved it from the consent agenda. So let me find that. Item L. We have a Slatewood preliminary plat for 26 lots on 12 acres zoned RS15, located along Sulfur Springs Road, KBT Land developer. Mr. Barbie?
And before Mr. Barbie gets started, I'm just going to ask the cable department so that Mr. Barbie doesn't have to scroll up 500 pages to use the screen on my computer that's in front of me.
For the rest... For some of the rest of us, would you tell us what page you're on, Mr. Blomley?
It's page 69 of 604 in the...
Good. I'll get there.
In the document.
Thank you.
So if the cable department could pull up the laptop that I'm at.
Right there.
Challenge accepted.
Well, looks like Ms. Green and Mr. Barbie have gotten us where we need to go.
All right.
All right. Good afternoon. Today, I bring to you Slatewood subdivision. It's located along the southern side of Sulfur Springs Road. 26 lots is owned RS15. This preliminary plat's generally in good order. We do have two items. Their staff has two items that we are slightly concerned about and would like to discuss. Number one, several of the lot envelopes in the cul-de-sacs are very restricted. We'd just like the developer to confirm with us that they do have a product that will fit within those envelopes without requiring any type of variance or exclusion. And then the second item is subdivision design just has one way in and one way out, and is not providing stub connections to adjacent properties for future connectivity to that large tract. That's one of our... That's our second concern, and I believe, Mr. Blomley, you had a few thoughts that you wanted to express about that?
I do. I just want to put into context, Mr. Barbie mentioned the connection to adjacent properties, and we've made the comment that there needs to be a stub to the undeveloped property to the west. And let me pull up the... So...
That would be at the top of our page, right?
So...
Let me up here.
I guess you can't see what's on my screen.
The top of that page.
Correct. Correct. So you'll see the Murray-Larache property is directly to the west. These two properties... So you've got the highlighted property, and then there's the L property around that highlighted property, which comprised the subject development, Slatewood. What staff has requested and included in staff comments is a stub to the property to the west, the Murray-Larache property, in... To be consistent with our subdivision regulations and our design guidelines. So, Mr. Barbie, if you could pull back up the plan, and so I just wanted to read to you the... Put into context why we made that comment. The subdivision regulations state that "The arrangement of public streets shall provide for the continuation between adjacent properties when such continuation is necessary for convenient movement of traffic, effective fire and police protection, efficient provisions of utilities and road maintenance." And our design guidelines states that, in addition to several other points that it makes on connectivity, it states that "In accordance with the City of Murfreesboro Current Subdivision Regulations and Street Design Specifications," it says, "Streets shall be designed to provide continuation between adjacent properties when such continuation is necessary for convenient movement of traffic, effective fire and police protection, efficient provisions of utilities and road maintenance." And so, you know, and it says, "Where possible and practical, multiple access points to developments shall be provided for emergency service access." And so this was a comment on our staff comments, and the applicant has indicated that he would like to discuss that connection further, and that is why we have taken it off of the consent agenda. And Mr. Bill Huddleston is here, as well as his client, the developer, Mr. John Trout. And so I will yield to them unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Mr. Huddleston?
Good afternoon again. Chair Jones, members of Planning Commission, Bill Huddleston, Huddleston Steel Engineering. John Trout is the developer, and he would like to speak after I do. He does know that these are tight building envelopes, but they're not that tight because this is something y'all don't get to see very much, which is RS15 subdivision. These are regular RS15 lots, and most of the time, you're seeing smaller lots, and they are tighter building envelopes, but these aren't as tight as they look, but he does recognize that he'll have a product that fits on them. Also, this is just 26 lots on the 12 acres. It's not a very large subdivision. It's surrounded on the left side of the page and the bottom of the page by Albany Court, a subdivision I designed years ago. It does not have any stub connections to connect to. The property on the top of the page is owned by John Murray and Elizabeth Larache, some people that I've known for a very long time. Some of you may know them, or some of you may have been on their property for charity events or something like that. They have never indicated over the years that they would ever develop this property in any way, so to me, it just doesn't make sense to provide a stub street to them that won't be used for anything other than people maybe not doing what they ought to be doing in public. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Commission, goodness gracious, thank you so much. My name's John Trout, proud citizen of Murfreesboro. Appreciate your time. What a meeting, and I will keep it brief. From my stance to have any merit, you guys have to trust that this is not about losing a lot. This is about me trying to... I'm in the first quarter of my development career, and I want to bring some really awesome stuff to this city that I love, and I believe that if we have to put a stub street in here, it takes away from the authenticity, the private, the exclusivity, the luxury style that we're trying to do on these 20, 25 lots. I'd like to not have to have this stub. There's only 21 lots that are actually affected if we're going to talk about from... You know, I got from Ms. Noel, I asked her to please consider not requiring the stub. She said no, and she sent back the links to the subregs and to the design requirements. So with the subregs, she specifically referenced 5-7-4-3V, which states, "Existing streets that extend to a land tract or which are stubbed out to a land tract shall be extended into the land tract as the land tract is developed," which to me says, "If Albany Court had a stub to us, I wouldn't be here today. We would have to connect to the stub that's to us." It does not. The Murphy property that was referenced already has three stubs that are going to it, so if ever it was sold and developed, there's plenty of connectivity going through it. If you all need to see those, I can assure you, there's three stubs that are going to it currently." And so that's kind of on that point. With regard to the design guidelines that Ms. Noel sent me, if you look at a picture, and I wish I could pull this up, but if you look at a picture, this is the design guideline. And so this is a picture of a commercial property, not applicable. This is a picture that I would assume is of a ideal, what they're looking for for the type of connectivity for residential property. Well, there's at least two or three different cul-de-sac streets on this picture that have more than 30 lots to the cul-de-sac, if you're following me. So we have 21 lots. So we're basically a cul-de-sac with 21 lots, which we can find all over this town. And so it's my opinion that 21 lots, what it's going to take... It's going to keep us from being able to establish the type of neighborhood. It's going to be fine if we can't get our wishes, but I think that we can give Murfreesboro something that it will be proud of and something that will be really, really nice if we don't have to have a stub in there to take away, you know, for future neighborhoods to come through. I don't know that it matters, but we're trying to establish a really high-end luxury product here that's going to have a different style, something that I think Murfreesboro is going to be really proud of. So I guess I'll stop there. I know it's been a long... I did have some other points. I've really prepared for this and would love to speak to you all individually. I don't know what the process is from here, but I appreciate you hearing me out, and I hope that you'll consider my words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout.
I'm abstaining. I'm happy to answer your questions, or I can sit down. I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Us either.
So, yeah, I don't mind making a comment. Actually, I think it's a pretty good point you make, and potentially, you know, there may be something that we ought to consider as a planning commission, as a council, as it relates to our, you know, our kind of our guidelines that we set forth, that maybe the whole stub row thing could depend on the number of units or the number of houses that we're going to. I mean, you know, there are certainly... I mean, if this was... I mean, if this was half the size it is, and you're wanting to put eight homes in there, you know, you're right. Why, you know, what point is it okay to not have a bunch of ways in and out? And frankly, if you put another road out on Sulfur Springs, that doesn't really get you any help, to just be right honest, because the reality is, if something goes wrong, it's probably going to go wrong out there. But so one question I'll have, this is probably for staff, and this shows my ignorance about this, but forgive me on it. It looks like there's a sewer and water easement along Lot 11 over there in Albany Court. Can you put roads on top of that? Is that something that... I mean, if there was going to be a stub that you could run it straight... You see where I'm talking about, down at the, what, really the southeast corner of this property? I mean, is that a place where you could run a road straight out there to Albany Court, or is that no-go?
Good afternoon. We did actually look at that possibility. The geometry there just makes trying to make that road connection a little bit of a challenge, but...
Yeah, because you couldn't get any lots back there on the back corner.
It also makes those two lots on Albany Court then corner lots when they were interior lots, so it changes the dynamic of those lots as well. With those driveways, probably wouldn't meet our corner clearance requirements.
Yeah. And I can confirm that what he said, Albany Court actually does stub into John Murray's property. I used to live at the corner. So I'm okay with it, so...
Also, I do feel like, you know, our ordinances, or whichever exactly this is that we're up against here, you know, I don't think you can write an ordinance for every single possibility. I think that's what we're here for, is to know what the ordinances are with help from our staff and leading us along the way, knowing what it says, and then for us to be able to interpret and make decisions when we see it fit to possibly do something different than the ordinance might just set in stone. I would see this as a place that we would... I don't have a problem not requiring a second stub street in this subdivision anywhere, or a stub road going out anywhere. So, and I'm usually pretty adamant about it, you know? I've been pretty strong about it most of the time, but just, there's just times when I don't see a really strong need for it, and I feel like this is one of them. So that's my thoughts on the stub street. On the second item that staff had a concern about, which was some of the cul-de-sac lots and the building envelope, I can't read, and I could enlarge it to see, but, Mr. Huddleston, do you have one of those notes that says that it would require an engineer to place the corners or stakes a lot?
I asked my draftsman this morning if he had that on there, and he doesn't, so I said we probably ought to add it. So we'll add that on there.
I think that would be a logical add on those small building envelope cul-de-sac lots. Your best intentions and the best builders out there, we all know, have just flat-out missed it sometimes.
That'd be great. And one other thing we'd like to ask for, when we develop along a substandard road like Sulfur Springs Road, quite often we provide fee in lieu of improvements, and so the money goes into a fund that it can be used later when the city comes through to widen that road, and we're happy to do that. I think there was a staff comment that said they wanted us to go ahead and build the improvements, but that doesn't really make any sense, because everything's already developed along Sulfur Springs Road, Breckenridge and everything to the east. So we just like pay that fee in lieu of, like we always do.
Let me get some explanation.
Sulfur Springs Road is on our major transportation plan to be upgraded to a three-lane cross-section. It is the city's policy that whenever you are developing along a road that is on that plan, that you participate in those improvements, and we were asking for a left-turn lane for operational reasons to get traffic making the turn into this subdivision out of the through lane, and so that traffic could continue to move. And that was combined decision with the city engineer and public infrastructure as well.
I have a hard time arguing with that one, so...
Again, 27 lots, usually 75 lots is the criteria for a left-turn lane. I spoke with the city engineer about that. She said she'd look into it, so if we could at least keep that item to where we could work with staff and work it out, that'd be helpful.
You got something to add, Mr. Blomley? Because I'm conflicted on this one. I'm not sure I agree with the whole left-turn lane. I'm on that, like, that spot every day, multiple times a day.
I think I have something to buy y'all a bit of time on that. So to inject a little bit of procedure, if the planning commission feels that this is an appropriate time to grant an exception to our subdivision regulations, the subdivision regulations state that it must be... Let me find the exact lane.
Are you talking about on the stub-out road, the exception on the stub road?
Yeah, so, and which will, I think, create some time for us to get Ms. Emerson to opine further on the turn lane. She just thought she was done today at this meeting, so...
Same.
So what... And I've been toggling back and forth between different sections of our subdivision regulations, but there's a... There is a specific section in our subdivision regulations regarding exceptions to the subdivision regulations. It's called Alternatives and Exceptions. Here, I don't think they're really offering an alternative to the stub, because it's... They're not providing a different connection, but what it does say is that "If the planning commission finds that extraordinary hardship or practical difficulty may result from strict compliance with these subdivision regulations, an exception variance from these subdivision regulations may be granted, provided that such exceptions shall not be granted when it would have the effect of nullifying the general intent and purpose of these regulations, and provided further that the planning commission shall not permit exceptions unless it shall make findings based upon written evidence presented to it in each specific case that..." And then it goes on to list four things. So I think what the applicant has to do in order for you to grant him an exception to the subdivision regulations is put together a written request addressing each one of the standards that are in our subdivision regulations. And if you think that that's the direction that he should go in moving forward, and then we can put it under Old Business on the November 3, Planning Commission Agenda for Consideration, at which time we would have additional information from Ms. Emerson on the need for the turn lane into the site.
So you're saying we can't move forward with a preliminary plat as it's shown?
With his request, no. No, because we don't have the written request.
What does happen... There's one on the consent agenda that was six lots. So what does happen? What is the number? This seems like a lot of red tape. It would be nice if we could just do what the commission is thinking sounds good. So what the question is, what is the number? I mean, to not require stub street? It's not clear, is it?
Yeah. Mr. Trout, I think I'm providing the path for the planning commission to give you the relief that you're asking for, if they so choose.
I think it's a... I just thought it was a valid question. Like, I didn't know... So there's not a number... Okay, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
So our issue now is, we can't vote on the absence of another stub street without the turn lane issue being resolved?
You're saying it has nothing to do with turn lane?
Right. I'm just saying that you seem to have some questions about the turn lane and need more information on that, and this would give you an opportunity to get that additional information regarding the turn lane, if you wish to move forward with the exception to the subdivision regulations, which we would need, which you would need to take action on with the written information provided by the applicant.
All right, let's be real clear on this for what Kathy said. This is on our agenda today to approve it. It was on the consent agenda, and it's gotten moved off that. And you're saying we literally cannot approve it today, like it shows up right here?
You can approve it with staff's conditions that the stub road be provided, which is consistent with the subdivision regulations, but if you wanted to grant an exception to the subdivision regulations, you don't have the written request to do so that the subdivision regulations require.
So be it.
Okay.
So...
So...
Just do it. That's it. Let's just get the written stuff done, and so...
And in the meantime, work on the turn lane issue.
Yeah. For Ms. Emerson's knowledge, I mean...
From that standpoint, I'm really...
I'm all right with adding money.
Whatever staff regarding the turn lane, I don't...
Yeah, let me... Thank you, Chair Jones. Let me just provide a little commentary on the fees in lieu of versus construction. I do believe that there are several street cuts proposed in Sulfur Springs Road. The developer be required to repair those cuts according to our standards. So they're going to be repaving a portion of Sulfur Springs Road, and rather than the city take money that sits in an account, we can't drive on that money, but we can drive on widened pavement. So our preference is, when it's appropriate, to have the developer actually construct some improvements that provide a benefit to traffic, rather than us hold that money for a future larger project. And so in this case, I think staff correctly recommended that construction be performed because of the street cuts and because of the benefit to traffic for the left-turn movement, rather than us taking cash for all of that and holding it for a number of years before we see those improvements. Be glad to answer any questions on that.
How much longer linear feet of improvement are we talking about, the street cuts versus a left-turn lane? I assume the left-turn lane has some stacking that goes beyond the street cut to the east?
Sure. So street cuts require, according to our typical approach, street cut requires 50 feet of repaving in each direction. And if I'm reading their plans correctly, as they're presented here, that would result in almost a continuous overlay of the street.
Which that 50 feet is going to cover the stacking in the left-turn lane.
What it does not cover, however, is the widening, and so there would be a... There would be some need to widen one side or both sides of the road, and we'd generally look for about 50 feet of full width, and then 150 to 200 feet of transition, depending on whether that's one side or both sides. But it would generally be within the context of their frontage, that we'd be able to put that left turn in and then taper it back out.
And could I ask, would that require sidewalks for that distance as well?
It would not include sidewalks or curb and gutters. Those would be later additions with the city's larger three-lane project. But it would provide the operational benefit that Ms. Noel referenced by helping eliminate those left-turn conflicts into Slatewood subdivision. And so that was our thinking, that was staff's thinking to conclude, that it's better to build rather than take the cash.
I'm good with no stub road, and I'm good with widening it and putting the turn lane in. We can come back, circle up, a couple weeks.
Is that going to affect the lots, those first two lots, at all?
Yeah, part of that requirement, Commissioner Russell, is that they also dedicate right-of-way and/or easements necessary to support those future roadway improvements.
Is that in this plat?
It should be in this plat. That should have been a staff comment. I'm going to look at Ms. Noel and the other Mr. Huddleston to make sure that that was part of the consideration.
Okay, I'm good.
And I'm good with the stub, as you all heard my comments. A little, I guess, disappointed in the fact that if we knew this was the way this was going to get presented to us today, and there is no way for it to get approved in the way it is presented, that we didn't go ahead and at least let the developer know that if you want it to get approved as it's presented, you will need to have a written request outlining these four items for them to be able to approve it. So we were not...
I'll take responsibility for that, Ms. Jones.
You know, I feel like that was not...
That was an oversight on my part for not relaying that to him, and I'll take responsibility for that.
I do think the turn lanes, I agree with that and think it makes sense, sounds like between Ms. Noel and Mr. Huddleston's explanation there, that that's something we should go ahead and require. And I would also like to see that note about the building lots and being required to have an engineer lay those out. So are we going to... Our only option, as I understand it, is to defer.
Yeah, we need to defer.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll put that the very first thing at our next night meeting. We appreciate Mr. Trout hanging out with us for four hours today, and we'll get it on the first thing under Old Business at our night meeting, so that he doesn't have to stay for four hours on the 3rd.
You don't want to stay through all those November 3 hearings again? I mean, oh, come on.
Move for defer.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay.
All right, little additional staff reports and other business.
There are staff reports and other business?
Yes. Before the meeting, Mr. Blomley placed at your stations this invitation from our Community Development Department, and we've invited you to participate in a fair housing kickoff meeting for our Community Development Department. About every five to seven years, we are required to prepare an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. We have a consultant helping us with that. We've... We're trying to gather a representation of stakeholders in our community, and the planning commission, because of your role as a planning commission member, but also because of your backgrounds and other work that you do in our community, bring some unique insight into that, and we'd like for each of you to consider attending this. It'll be Thursday, October the 28th, between 10:00 and 12:00 at the Airport Business Center, and you should be receiving this same invitation in your planning commission email box. And if you could respond to that lesson about your plans, whether you'd be able to attend, or if you cannot attend, we'll also be providing a survey as a follow-up that where you can also provide your input, but I think the kickoff meeting will give you some good insight into the need for the analysis and the issues that we're asking about. I'd be glad to answer any questions either now or before or up through the completion of the survey. Thank you.
I do not believe I'll be able to attend.
Yes, I think, Mr. LaLance, we received that report from our Community Development staff on another invitation that we sent to the mayor and council.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. What other staff reports and other business? I believe Mr. LaLance has something.
Just really quickly, I wish Ms. Emerson was here, or maybe not, so she shouldn't throw anything at me, but I want the planning commission to consider something that I've seen in other areas that I think is, and maybe this is, I don't know, really the right progress here, the progression, I mean, whether it's council or... But I've seen, especially in right-in, right-out-only ingress egress into businesses or whatever, I've seen in some other cities here lately, the little white stakes that are just, you know, anywhere from this wide to that wide, that kind of line the turn lane, so that, you know, once you get over in that turn lane, you go into, you know, you can't come out of the right-out and go across and cut a left, where we intend for people to make a, you know, a right turn out only. They have those little white stakes that keep you from messing up, you know? Like, I think of Asbury Lane, if we, you know, ever make that a right-in, right-out-only. I think of the gas station that's coming in on the corner. I think we did some right-in, right-out there. I just want to get that in the hopper for our staff to be thinking, is that something? I mean, is that... Can that be done here? Is there some weird reason why we can't do it? I know that's a little out of the box for what we've done in the past, but I think, you know, as we get bigger and as we get busier and our roads have more cars on them and all that kind of stuff, we're going to have to start doing some stuff like that in order to make sure we don't create bad situations. So I'd like for you guys to consider, because I think that is a planning, that's the stuff we deal with all the time, and then staff would maybe look into that a bit and see if that's something... I hate those things. You hate them because you can't turn a left.
Because you can't turn a left.
You want to. I get it. I know. But it does make sense for... I think it makes sense for protecting, you know, protecting traffic and wrecks and whatnot.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. LaLance. Any other business? Okay. We do stand adjourned.